Thank you.
We waiting for anyone else, Erica? Alright, let's go ahead and get started though. There's him. Call the roll please.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilman Santin.
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Fahad.
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Okay, thank you. Welcome everyone to our local planning agency meeting tonight, October 28th. We'll get started with approval of minutes from the September 9th, 2024.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Councilman Vasquez?
Second.
I mean, Mayor Vasquez, you approved the second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the vote please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Alright, thank you. We go on to a public hearing. Well, I'll let, who's going to read the ordinance?
I'll read.
Eric, okay, and then we'll open it up for a public hearing.
An ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida comprehensively amending section 150-070.1 Miami Springs Gateway Overlay District within Article 7 Business District of Chapter 150 zoning code of the city's code of ordinances providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? Anyone in line, Erica?
Nope, Mr. Stock. No.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll get started. Sylvia, do you want to, our city planner?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I don't have a nice presentation prepared for you tonight on PowerPoint because I figured that it might be more useful to have the actual text of the ordinance. In case you have questions, we can bring it up on the screen and I'm connected on Zoom, so that's what I'm going to do. See, just wrong. Am I connected?
He's gonna come here, he's gonna... Yeah. Oh, I didn't know the host was here.
Yeah. Okay. Um... Alright. Thank you. Okay. So I will just start by saying that we have been working on this ordinance for quite a while now and we had a workshop. Can't remember the date right now, but it's been probably six, seven, eight, maybe even eight months, going back to...
June. Well, this is the last one, June of...
We had a briefing in June where we had a version of this document that I presented, but before that, we had a workshop following the the joint workshop of the Planning and Zoning Board, zoning and planning board, and the architectural review board. And so we have been sort of talking extensively about this. You have seen the vast majority of the changes. And I hope you had an opportunity to read through it and sort of refresh your memories on some of these. So I'll go through each section, sort of briefly summarizing the changes that we're making. And then I'll also, as we go, highlight the latest changes, the ones that you have not seen, that are changes from the last time that we talked about this, okay? So just as a reminder...
Excuse me, when you're saying changes we haven't seen, they're not, they're changes that are not on here, or they...
Yes, changes they are here, but...
They're underlined here, right, yes, okay.
Today, before this meeting. So where was I going? Alright, so just generally, we started this process with the goal of just kind of adding some clarity to certain parts of the ordinance. As we got into it, we realized that there were more than a few parts that were a little ambiguous, that were a little unclear, left a lot perhaps to the imagination and a lot to the discretion of myself, for example, as a city planner, in aspects of development approval that probably should not be given that discretion. And so with that, as well as some of the comments, concerns that I had been hearing from all of you when we first started working here with respect to this particular district, it became a little bit more than just the cleanup of the ordinance. We have not only tried to refine the language and add clarity throughout, but also we ended up reorganizing some sections so that it would make more sense as you go through the documents. Start with your purpose and then understand, you know, sort of the boundaries and the parameters and the standards in a way that makes sense, that is logical until we get to the very end and we're adding then some sections there that address one of your major concerns, which I'll talk about in a moment. So let's go through these different sections, starting with the purpose, and maybe I'll just try to get in here a little more. Here, to me, the the purpose lacked a little bit of strength. I've been hearing a lot about what the city wants to accomplish in that area, and when I read this purpose, it just didn't come through for me. And so what I tried to do was make it a little bit more vigorous, a little bit, you know, sort of more clearer, come through, clear that we're trying to create a very sort of compact area for a specific purpose, which is dining, retail, entertainment, pedestrian-friendly, nice walking environment, obviously with good quality of public realm and also buildings individually. So that's what this section is about. And if you have, if you have any questions about any of these, please just stop me as we go. That's the whole purpose of me having the text on the screen, if I can scroll down. Alright, the second section is the boundary definition. And here, I kept scratching my head when I read through it and I saw that there wasn't even a map, it's just a little aerial photo with no boundaries shown or anything, and just a bunch of sort of, I guess, basic legal descriptions based on blocks and lots and what happens if somebody comes in and splits a lot in half and then you have to go back and change. So this is not really a very common way of defining boundaries of zoning districts. And so we went back and created a little map, which eventually probably will want to refine because right now we don't have a good GIS layer for zoning, we're going to have to work on that. But at least we took your existing zoning map, which has the zoning districts, it has the streets labeled and all of that, and so that's what we're using. We're also simplifying the boundary description by delineating it in terms of the street boundaries, which is really what this district does. And part of this effort is also an idea that was discussed all the way back when with the zoning and planning board and also the architectural review board, which was the idea of potentially expanding the district. We talked about different options with them, one of which is the one that you see on the screen, which was to extend the boundary one street to the northwest to Market Street. And the two boards were very, very supportive of that idea. In fact, they were supportive, not just extending in that direction, but also extending to the south. We looked at that very carefully, we didn't feel like it was going to be feasible to do that because of the sort of irregular shape of that area to the southwest of the circle. And so for the time being, at least, we are recommending this expansion to make Market Street the new boundary to northwest, and that's what you see on the screen.
And I do have a question on that. I know I had asked that we reach out to, because basically that extension of boundary is one property, one building.
We did.
Did we receive any communication?
Did not receive communication after we...
Tried to reach out to them.
We had a, we had a conversation, JC and I, with the, I'm sorry, I forget, her title is...
Teach the local government rep?
The government liaison or something like that, yeah.
For that building?
For the company, for the property owner. And she said, sure, you know, we're very happy to work with you and send me the information, and I did, and I didn't hear back.
Okay.
But...
We've communicated with them and they're, okay, which is what I wanted to make sure.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, the next section is a new section. We really didn't have, we had, and I want to make clear that, you know, there are sections where I have kind of pulled text from other sections and I have created new sections based on a combination of text. So trying to use a lot of what was there, cleaning it up and trying to make it make sense, if you will. So there was, there was some language in different parts of this ordinance that talked about, this is, you know, this applies to development this way and redevelopment and remodeling, and none of it was very well defined. So this section, which is applicability, is what I'm trying to use to do that. So now hopefully it is clear that this applies to new development, which means from the ground up, and redevelopment, which means to knock down something that is there and start from scratch. And there's language in there that is, you know, a little bit more specific. But it also explains that redevelopment not only means knocking down a building and starting from scratch, but also expanding an existing building, for example, if you have, if you're making an addition to a building, or any other change that could result in the intensification of an existing use and/or a need for additional parking. I think that those are, those two are good criteria to use because anything that is going to intensify the use, that is going to require more parking, is going to trigger, and this is very common in other places too, the need to re-review. And to what extent, we can talk about whether it has to go through a full site plan process again, or it's just some other process, but I think that it, these are the cases in which we, we review to some extent. With that, the flip side is what do we accept? And so the next section was sort of in the back, way, way, way in the back. I think it's better to make all of this clear from the very beginning. So together with the applicability section, we have this exemptions section, which is a lot of that old language, but you know, some of it new and some of it revised. And you know, some of the changes have been, for example, that, you know, if a project is only involving interior remodeling or renovation of an existing structure and not affecting the use in any way, then it is exempt from having to meet. If it is only involving the restoration or the maintenance of an existing building facade, not resulting in material alteration of the architectural design, and material alteration is defined, then it is also exempt. And those are the, those are the key ones. There's a couple more. Like, for example, if the use is, or the structure is temporary, or if the site plan, if the project was given site plan approval by yourselves prior to the enacting of this ordinance, should it be approved?
To the chair.
Yeah.
Sorry, now that we're on it, numbers, letter C, on number, line item 32 and 33?
Yes.
Where it says here, "An expansion of an existing building or any other other change that may result in intensification of an existing use and/or need for an additional parking." Do we have percentages on the intensity of the existing use or renovation or redevelopment of the existing property?
No, what that would do is, for example, if you have, let's say you have a restaurant in an existing building, and you want to increase the seating capacity of that restaurant. You can do that, but that is an intensification of the existing use. That also would trigger the need for additional parking, obviously, because we do have parking ratios that say restaurants require parking on an X ratio of spaces for seats, or you know, something like that. And so that is a very clear situation where that would be considered an intensification that would trigger the need to comply with this ordinance.
Okay, so irrespective of how much they're intensifying?
I think that we would review that in order to determine whether it really triggers intensification, you know, with parking, for example, sometimes if you, if you come up with fractions, you're round, does that mean, you know, like maybe it is zero point, you know, it really depends, but as a starting point, yes, we would review that, determine whether it intensifies or expands the use or changes the nature of the use, and then it would be required to comply.
Yeah, because I'm just trying to understand, to one point, would it be considered a redevelopment or a new development?
Redevelopment, other than these particular situations that we just talked about, for example, would mean knocking an existing building down and starting from scratch, or having a vacant piece of property and building from scratch on it. That would be new development, redevelopment would be knocking down existing and starting from scratch.
But what if they're, they're, they're using an existing and they're adding on to an existing?
If you are adding to an existing building and that intensifies the use that exists in the building or require additional parking, then that would trigger the need to comply.
With this?
Yes.
Letter C?
Mm-hmm.
Sylvia, when you're saying intensifies the use?
Yeah.
Are we referring to other things other than parking?
We are referring to changing, for example, from one category of use to another that is more intense, for example. An office use that is a professional service tends to be relatively low intensity. If you all of a sudden switch from that, the office leaves and it becomes a medical office, or it becomes a restaurant. That clearly is a change of use that intensifies the use of that building.
So that would be the case where the building is staying the same, they're changing the inside, there's no from ground up or no demolishment of the building, but inside the use has changed, and so intensification can mean a variety of things?
It really means if the use is intense, for example, you know, you could have an office of a certain type of use, right? And that leaves and somebody comes and takes it up for a different kind of office use that is more intense. Medical office is one example. It is, it is office, but it's a different kind. Most professionally offices are going to fall within the same category. So we're kind of looking at these sort of broad categories of use, office, retail, restaurant, right? But within that, there's just a few exceptions, and you all made the exception, you know, in the permitted uses list for medical, veterinary. Those are a little different than the office of an architect, or the office of, well, perhaps an accountant during tax season is pretty busy, but other than that, not a lot, right? So there are certain types of office uses that are intense destinations and others that are not, and they have different parking requirements for that reason too. So you can kind of see if it falls in one category and it moves into a different category, that may trigger it if it is an intensification of the use. The best, usually the best way to determine that intensification is to look at your parking requirements. Not always, but in most cases, you will see a difference. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, so that covers then applicability, which is subsection C, and exemptions, which is subsection E. The next section existed.
I do have a question under E.
Yeah.
On line 52, where we put...
I'm sorry?
Under E, line 52?
52, yes.
Where we have, "Shall include architectural elements that add vibrancy to the gateway district." Okay, we have an architectural review board, and I want to make sure, you know, it's always been important to me that where we have city boards and we're asking people to serve in advisory capacity, that we're utilizing them properly. So my understanding is with the architectural review board, when we looked at eliminating some boards because we weren't using them, that there's a provision in our charter, I believe, that requires an architectural review board to be present, and I don't remember, is that in the charter, Erica? Do you remember? There was some provision why we couldn't...
I think it's a state.
A state, maybe the...
It is in the code, though.
Okay.
So...
So under, and there's several places in this document where we make mention for architectural features and all, I'd like to put in there that this goes to review.
Okay.
By the architectural review.
That absolutely makes sense.
Good place for them to get involved and engaged in this.
Absolutely, I agree, and...
So I'm not sure where, but anywhere in this that we refer to whenever we're talking about architectural features.
Process section, because that one describes when a project comes in for review, it goes to the zoning and planning board, and then it comes to you, we can add the provision for architectural review board. And in fact, when we met with the two boards together, they very much wanted to perhaps even collaborate on the review. It could, this could even be joint meetings when they review.
We have really good professionals in the city, like I always say, we have really great professionals as residents in our city, and you know, we, whenever we can tap into their expertise and their assistance, we need to do that.
I'm sure they would be happy to.
Okay.
Be more used. But, okay, so kind of getting into the meat of this one, the section was there, and what we did here was try to clarify, there were, you know, like several types of standards, you know, there are building design standards, there are site planning standards, and so I tried to separate those so they would be clear for property owners, for developers, for architects, you know, what we're looking for under these different sort of titles. And instead of having all of that sort of in a salad here, to make these more of the minimum zoning standard, as well as to maybe set some principles that we want to apply to everything, regardless of whether it is the building. So kind of went back and looked through these, you know, the vast majority of them are sections, subsections, and items that are already there. We just kind of tried to clarify the language, and the one thing that we added under the first few is an open space requirement, which did not exist, is very minimal because this is an urban district, but we're including 10% of the side areas as an obstructed open space. Just kind of go in immediately into that one. You all have made changes not very long ago, so I tried not to introduce too much change in that one, but we did make a few little tweaks to the medical dental office. We found, for example, that physical therapy was under personal services, but that's really sort of a medical service, so we added it in there and clarified some of the other uses in the personal services, for example, instead of physical therapy, massage therapy, that is a personal service, personal training, and so on and so on. In addition, we added Brupa, which was the subject of extensive discussion at one of the meetings that I had with you all a while ago. And with Roger's help, we refined the language for that section. That little new section has some, some sort of conditions that we wanted to meet, which is one of the reasons why, one of the questions I would have is whether this should be a permitted use or whether it could be a conditional use. And if you want to make it as a right, that's fine, it's there already, but you know, since I'm just going to, about to go into a subsection that is called conditional uses, I'm just throwing that out there. So conditional uses, we talked a lot about these as well. Conditional uses just refers to uses that may be appropriate for a zoning district, but not without some conditions placed on them. And by having a process to review those a little bit, scrutinize a little bit more than a normal site plan, then that gives you the ability to use a criteria here to review those, but impose conditions that you think are appropriate. And so the list of conditional uses that is there is more of a placeholder for you to consider. Some of those are from the CBD, and a few are not. I felt, for example, this might be someplace where a building would include a little theater or an auditorium or some sort or an event space. That's great, but you might want to look at it a little more carefully because it has a certain impact on traffic, on parking, et cetera, so you may want to look at those a little bit differently. But again, you know, this little list is more of a placeholder for discussion than anything else at this point. For me, actually, the more important part is that we actually are including a conditional use procedure with requirements for submittal and requirements for review and criteria for you to review. And my idea is to have this here for the moment. If we include conditional uses, then that's great. And eventually we'll pull this piece out, which is relatively neutral, and we have it in its own procedure section because we have conditional uses in the other parts of the code with no procedure to process them. And so we will need that language eventually anyway.
Hey, let me stop you a minute before you go on. Before you go on, because we need to discuss, yes, what we're going to do here. We have a regular council meeting supposed to start at seven and we have a lot of people showing up for that meeting. Um, I know I have a lot of questions on this.
I like to.
So I don't see us being able to.
Okay.
Get through this before and we're supposed to ideally vote to accept this, to then vote on it during the council meeting. So there's some possibilities here. Um, we won't be ready to vote on it for the council meeting if we start the council meeting at seven. But I don't see how we can, you know, have any idea of how quickly we'll get through this. Pardon me?
Well, you should have started at six on this one.
Yeah.
Well, people work.
Or, yeah, or um, or you know, have a separate uh, time. So, and I'm open to suggestions, however y'all want to do it. I think the best thing would be um, we break this up, the LPA right now, we start the council meeting. We won't be able to go to item, what is it, the first uh, reading?
It's a, yeah, the first reading.
Yeah, that'll have to be postponed to the next meeting. And then we can decide and perhaps we can decide the end of the meeting or we can decide now. Um, when we get through all the reading um, agenda, the regular agenda of the seven o'clock meeting, if we want to continue with this, since we're already here. Probably would be the best thing. We've already here, we'll just stay late. Is that alright unless?
We convene the LPA?
Yes. And that way we're, and Heidi, I guess you'll have to tell us if this is possible, but that way we're holding it on the same day that we've already said we're going to have it.
So, so you could actually just table this discussion and just sort of put this meeting on pause, the LPA meeting. Start your regular meeting, go through the that agenda. Perhaps you want to leave the uh, ordinance on first reading till the end of the agenda.
You can do.
Then reopen, put that meeting on pause, reopen this meeting, have the discussion. Uh, make the recommendation and by that point, uh, you'll be ready, having had just discussed it. You'll be ready to make a vote on first reading and then of course, any changes that you wish to see to the ordinance as a result of your discussion. We can make those between first and second reading and bring them back, uh, depending on how extensive or not those are, either at the November or December meeting.
Okay, I think that's everyone understood. What we'll do is pause this meeting, hold our regular seven PM meeting and then pause that one. And then go back to um, the LPA and then if we feel comfortable enough, then we can um, um.
Make a decision.
Do the, right, do the, what item is that? Eight A. Um, and if not, we'll delay it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so Heidi, do we need to do something officially to pause this meeting?
A motion to table.
Okay, is there a motion to table?
Table the LPA discussion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Zantin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Alright, thank you. And then with that, we will move right into, since it's a few minutes after seven. Um, we'll move into our regular city council meeting for Monday, October twenty-eighth. Call the vote, call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes. You're sending.
Okay, Councilman Zantin?
You heard.
Yeah, I thought I heard.
Yes, yes, sorry, sorry.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
There's a quorum present.
Alright, thank you. Um, please stand if you are able for the invocation by the Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Father in heaven, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights and we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. In James, chapter one, verse five, it says, if any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God. God who gives generously to all without reproach and it will be given. We claim this promise as we start our meeting and trust in your provision. Thank you for being with us always. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, welcome again, everyone, to our October twenty-eighth regular city council meeting. Um, to those of you that are joining us in the audience, always nice to see some um, friendly faces. And to those of us, uh, those of you that are joining us virtually, welcome. We'll get started with awards and presentations. If there is anyone that wants to speak um, during open forum or any of the agenda items, please be sure, I should have announced this before. But please be sure to sign up here at the podium, okay, if you'd like to be recognized to speak to us. Um, we'll get started with awards and presentations and our first item is uh, recognizing our officer of the month for August twenty twenty-four. Chief?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mary. One sec here. Officer Mallory Rodriguez, you can step forward, please. Officer Mallory Rodriguez was nominated for Officer of the Month for November twenty twenty-four. On August seventeen, twenty twenty-four, at twelve twenty-two AM, Officer Mallory Rodriguez demonstrated attentiveness and commitment during her midnight shift. During roll call and email from a longtime resident and retired Miami Dade County Police Sergeant residing in the five hundred block of Falcon Avenue was shared with the team. The email expressed concerns about a neighbor bringing people to his residence at all hours of the night and highlighted that the individual was wearing an ankle monitor. The resident suspected this person might be involved in recent vehicle burglaries in the area. Upon receiving this information, Officer Rodriguez immediately took action. While patrolling the area, she observed the individual on an electric scooter, no front or rear facing lights, traveling against the flow of traffic. She conducted a traffic stop during which the subject discarded a cylindrical object into the grassy swale at five seven one Falcon Avenue. The object was later identified as a pill container containing ten white Xanax bars, eleven orange Adderall pills, two white Tiva pills requiring a prescription, four blue oxycodone pills and ten elazepam Xanax pills. All individually packaged in separate ziplock baggies. Following this, Officer Rodriguez placed the suspect into custody. A surgeon, search incident to the arrest revealed half gram of crystal methamphetamine in the subject's sock. Further search of the subject's cross body bag uncovered two clear glass vials of what is considered GHB, which most people know as a date rape jug. Additionally, during this incident, Officer Rodriguez, in an effort to leave the arrestee's scooter with his parents as requested, interacted with the homeowner at five six one Falcon Avenue. The homeowner requested the removal and trespassing of a individual from their property. The suspect, who had been visiting the arrestee, the homeowner's son, was asked to leave the premise. The subject provided his name and date of birth for trespass warning and consented to a search, which revealed a gold pill container can attached to a key containing four point six eight grams of crystal methamphetamine, as well as two glass bottles containing GHB. Suspect was subsequently trespassed from the property and arrested. Officer Rodriguez's thorough investigation and keen attention to detail resulted in multiple narcotics related arrests and demonstrated a proactive approach to community safety. Her actions have significantly contributed to the enhance enhancing the security of Falcon Avenue neighborhood. This arrest of these two individuals led to ten felony charges along with one misdemeanor. Her performance not only upholds the integrity of police force, but also strengthens the trust and safety within the community she serves. Uh, this is also the second time that Officer Rodriguez has uh, received the Officer of the Month award. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to express my deepest gratitude to Sergeant Dickerson for nominating me for this award. To my fellow officers on that shift that night, thank you for assisting me with this arrest. I'm incredibly grateful and I feel fortunate to work alongside each and every one of you. And lastly, I want to thank my family for being here today. Your constant support and motivation has helped me be the best version of myself today. Thank you all once again. I'm extremely humbled and honored by this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Officer Rodriguez, on behalf of all of the residents of Miami Springs, um, we're greatly indebted and and um, very appreciative of your service and protection of our community and your um, awareness, diligence. Um, I'm sure you you prevented something that could have been a much greater damage to our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is your family here? I also want to, um, as the chief explained, my understanding is um, uh, somebody had observed happenings at the house and had reported it to the police and and I want to encourage all residents, you know, we're all the eyes or ears. This is a collective effort. We're all part of this community and we're all the ones that notice things that may not be exactly what we think it is, you know, report it, let us look into it, let our police officers, our dedicated professional police officers just look into it. So thank you again. Um, chief, yes, did you want to say something else? Okay. Yes, now we have um, item four B is promotion ceremony presented by Chief Deal for our police officer Castillo. To police sergeant.
Officer Jonathan Castillo was born and raised in the city of Hialeah and graduated from Hialeah High in twenty-ten. He attended FIU, obtained his criminal justice degree, uh, his bachelor's in twenty-fourteen. He then began employment to Miami Springs Police Department as a police dispatcher. He excelled at that position and was sent to the police academy at City Miami in twenty-fifteen, graduating in twenty-sixteen. He was on patrol for ver- on various shifts and was then trained as an officer in charge, an alternate supervisor in twenty-eighteen. In twenty-twenty, he received his master's degree in criminal justice from FIU. Last year, he completed the sergeant's exam, made it on the list and after several promotions, he's now being promoted to the rank of sergeant. Sergeant? Sergeant Castillo is also our Officer of the Year for twenty-twenty-three. Very well deserved.
I just wanted to say whenever we see so many members of our police department here together, um, I know how I feel, so indebted and and grateful for your service and I am sure all of the other residents, everyone in in the council chambers, but all of the other residents watching this too, um, want to express their thank you. We are very grateful for your service. Okay, so now we move on to um, another presentation and this time we have, and we're staying here just because um, so it's more convenient, we have a proclamation for National Epidermolysis Bellosa Awareness Week. And as some of you may remember, um, at a former council meeting, I believe, at the last one. Uh, we uh, had a um, family member speak on behalf of one of our tiniest little residents of Miami Springs. A very lovely little uh, baby who um, unfortunately did not um, did not live long, but um, her memory will be with us as a tiny member of our community forever and ever because we're dedicating a bench in her memory. And uh, the family's here to receive, we uh, this week happens to be, and I'll have to put on my um, my glasses to read this. But this week happens to be National. But this week happens to be National Epidermolysis Billosa EB Awareness Week. So, this is very fitting that we have a proclamation from the city of Miami Springs. Whereas Epidermolysis Billosa is a rare genetic disorder characterized by fragile skin that blisters and tears from minor friction or trauma affecting both children and adults. And whereas individuals living with EB endure a painful and challenging daily life, often requiring specialized care and attention to manage their condition. And whereas National Dermalysis Billosa Awareness Week, observed annually from October 25th through October 31st, is dedicated to raising public awareness, advocating for research and treatment, and providing support to individuals and families affected by this debilitating condition. And whereas the city of Miami Springs remembers and honors the life of Ms. Margot Arroz, a courageous young resident born on June 10th, 2024, who tragically passed away on July 19th, 2024 due to complications from EB, reminding all of us of the importance of supporting research efforts to find a cure for this devastating disease. And whereas the city of Miami Springs stands in solitary with families affected by Epidermolysis Billosa and encourages its residents to join in recognizing the bravery of those who live with this condition and to support the efforts to raise awareness, improve treatment options, and advance research for a cure. And now therefore, I, Maria Buente Mitchell, mayor of the city of Miami Springs, on behalf of the city council and the residents of Miami Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of October 25th through October 31st, 2024 as National Epidermolysis Billosa Awareness Week. And I would like to invite the family of Margot's family who's here with us tonight to please come up and receive this. In the memory of Margot and to raise awareness for this disease. In a few weeks, we'll have a plaque at this bench. We're beautifying the bench also, and it's a bench near Curtis Mansion facing the bike path there. So hopefully, when you're walking on the bike path, you'll stop a few moments and reflect on that bench that is a small but loving tribute to Margot, our tiny little resident of Miami Springs. And thank you again to the family for bringing this to our attention. I'm sorry, I should have asked Margot's parents, would you like to say some words? It's okay. You or your husband or anyone in the family, if you'd like to, please. Come right here to the, to the mic, please, so we can hear you.
I want to thank councilmen and women and our mayor. Just want to say thank you for supporting this cause. This is very important to us. I just, we, you know, we will celebrate Margot for the rest of our lives and this community will celebrate with us and we really appreciate that. And I want to say thank you again.
God bless you, family. Okay, so we move on to the next agenda item.
Mayor, mayor, if I may, real quick, I was going to do this under item three, their agenda and order of business of the last, well, item 11A under new business. I'd like to pull that instead of having the discussion today, we can separate that in its own workshop.
Okay, I think that's a very good idea.
Just dedicate, dedicate the time that it deserves.
Yes, so you and Eric will be scheduling a workshop that, that we can all make. Okay, for item, that's for item 11A. We'll pull it from tonight and make it into a workshop for future discussion. Okay, with that, we move on to open forum and we have two people signed up to speak open forum. The first one is our former esteemed council member, Bob Best.
Good evening, mayor and council. I see we have a bard in our midst. Well, Bob Dylan would be proud of you anyway. Yes, thank you, mayor. I thought I would come in front of you all tonight. I know, I realize, of course, it's part of an agenda item, which is 9F, but it has to do, it speaks to the War Memorial Project, which is forthcoming. And by a vote of yourselves tonight, as a consent item, it'll move that, launch that plan forward. A little bit of history for those in chambers that might not know it and those at home, most on council do. This has been going on as a project for about a little over three years now, when we started it. And it originated with the American Legion and an ad hoc committee was formed, of which Councilman Vasquez, myself, Dennis Jordan, Ralph Crop, Jennifer Graham, and Richard Block are members. Now, we were forced to start a 501(c)(3) company for this. And from day one, when William Alonso, as city manager, was here before, and now J.C. Jimenez, we have strove to keep the city as partners with us in going forward on this, obviously because it's city property and as veterans, as some of us are on the committee and many are here in Miami Springs, this is very important to us all. In addition to that, it is in various stages of dilapidation, for lack of a better term. And we need to do better in this town in terms of refurbishing it and bringing it back to what it should be going forward for many years to come. We've had an architectural firm review it. We've spent good money on this. We were fortunate enough to receive money from the state of Florida a little over a year ago, right out of a year ago, J.C., am I wrong? Yeah. And, and we've also added to it with, with the gracious donations of many citizens in this town relative to bricks and the sale of. So, I just thought I would show up tonight as kind of a representative of the effort and applaud the moving forward of this and certainly hoping that tonight, in your, in your infinite wisdom on council, will approve this as a consent agenda going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next on open forum, we have Bob Dylan, did you say? No, no, Buzz Fleishman. Okay.
Hi, I'm Buzz Fleishman, mayor, council members, J.C., lawyers, assorted city folks. We have a very unique town here and we need to, to feel really great about it. We need to have a good sense of place. Our slogan, at the heart of it all, just came into my head as a line. And I said, oh damn, that's a song. So, I wrote this, it's just, just a fun little thing. Let's see where it goes. We could use it for the centennial, let's see what happens. We're at the heart of it all, we've got what it takes. Please don't confuse us with Miami lakes, we're not Miami, we're Miami Springs, Miami Springs. We got nice long alleyways, big canopy of trees, gotta keep them trimmed so we feel the gentle breeze in our tree city, Miami Springs, Miami Spring. We got a flock of wild parrots who squawk really loud, but then they get drowned out by the airport sound. In Miami Springs, Miami Springs, Miami Springs. You know, we got some wild ducks, they're filling up the street, good for traffic calming, but not good enough to eat. Fly to the gables, not Miami Springs, eh Miami Springs. Got a historic golf course in our little town, the River Cities Festival. Hey, it's our local playground, only in the springs, Miami Springs, eh Miami Springs. You know, the daily cut through drivers cause of traffic overload, but they're the only ones who ever want to leave the zip code. Drive to the suburbs, not through the springs, eh not through the springs. If we leave the town for dining outreach, if we ever leave this zip code for dining outreach, we go for lunch at Joe's Stone Crab on Miami Beach and take the causeway from Miami Springs, eh Miami Springs. But if we ever sped through town on testosterone, we'd get a speeding ticket from Don Mazon, our own Don Mazon. Don't speed in the springs, don't speed in the springs, don't speed in the springs. As we walk our dogs and as we drive, we wave to one another. It's almost like we're all related by another mother in our hometown, Miami Springs, Miami Springs. Now folks call us Mayberry, the term is apropos. Glenn Curtis built this bubble a hundred years ago. I love the springs, you love the springs, eh Miami Springs. So, let's, let's do with it what we like, what we wish. Let's see what happens in the next year and a half for the centennial. Let's, let's make it, get people together to do this. And through the centennial committee, what I'd like to do is allow residents to add their own verse. So, let's see who's, who's got any, any club, any family, any group? Let them add a verse. We'll figure out a way to get it sent in here, we'll add it to the song because we've got a lot of history here, we're very unique and we need that. Not every small town has a song, but this may be it. So, thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you, Buzz. And for those who don't know it, Buzz and his wife Kathy, in addition to Buzz's great talents as an actor and musician, they do so much for our community. They're one of these couples who are just always actively involved in the women's club and all these other civic entities. So, thank you for that. I forgot to mention the yard of the month because I, it's my understanding the yard of the month recipient isn't here at the meeting tonight, but I do want to acknowledge them. Our yard of the month for October is Joe and Adriana Perez at 915 Bluebird Avenue. And so, we have this certificate, which we will get to them. We appreciate your beautifying your yard and beautifying Miami Springs. And I encourage all our residents, if you get a chance in the next few days, be sure to drive by 915 Bluebird Avenue and enjoy the beautiful yard of the Perez family.
I was going to try to get Buzz back here for a minute.
Oh, is he still there, chief?
Encore.
Buzz, since I'm the liaison to the centennial committee, I'm going to make a decision today, if you want to take it, it's your first gig, Saturday, 10:30 at the stage for the grand opening of the inaugural Glenn Curtis Car and Vintage Motorcycle Show, how about that?
All right, and Buzz, you, Buzz, Buzz, since you opened up the opportunity for residents to come up with verses to add or lines to add to your song, will you provide Eric, our city clerk, with a way to communicate with you? In case she gets a call, I'll, I'll tell anyone that's listening, if they want to communicate with you to call our city clerk and she can, you don't, or unless you want to announce it right now.
Well, here's, here's what we should do, we should record it, put it on all the city platforms. And people have a way to respond to it and add, you know, so, so PR for the city can.
We'll have to, then this will take a little more looking into, so, okay, we'll look into that. All right.
We can't afford you.
Yes, we can. We can talk, we can convince him, we can talk him into doing it. All right, let's move to approval of council minutes for the October 14th regular meeting.
Motion to approve 6A.
There a second?
Second that.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to reports from boards and commissions and we have, I thought my understanding is.
I have Lynn Brooks on, on Zoom, who is here for.
For the parks and parkways. Boards, okay. Hi Lynn.
Lynn? I know I've asked her to unmute. Lynn? Lynn Brooks?
Okay, well, we'll move on if you get her later, then we'll, okay. And do we have the other two boards, they're going to present another time?
At the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm here.
Oh, hey Lynn.
Hey, sorry about that, I'm having technical difficulties here.
Hey, welcome. Thank you for coming to make a presentation on your advisory board progress.
Okay, we have some, I got called like last minute, so please forgive me. Oh, I don't have, let's see, all the, I think we're only doing two things. We have the, Juan, are you there?
Yes.
Is Juan there?
Yes, he's coming to the microphone, hold one second.
Yes, ma'am, good evening.
Juan is our public works director.
So, I know Juan came to our last meeting. Thank you for, what we proposed is to fix up the entrance to the city hall and the police station. Make it more beautiful when people come in, that's the first thing they see when they see our beautiful city and our wonderful town. So, we wanted to enhance it. So, Juan has some suggestions and I believe the board agreed to it.
Correct. The suggestions were to start afresh. Basically redo the irrigation system that's in the ground there. Remove all the vegetation that's there now and combine with more appropriate building material that's close, that allows it to be that close to the building so that they're not reaching out towards the sidewalk in order to get their sunlight. We will get the appropriate materials presented to J.C. and go from there forward.
And that's the, the areas you're talking directly touching the building?
All the planter boxes around.
Okay, all right, wonderful. No, that, that'll be nice, they, they could use some beautification.
Definitely.
Thank you, Juan. Lynn, anything else from the board?
No, I believe we did talk about some tree trimming and some of the other, what, what, what we're going to try to do with people trimming trees too much and all that. We have to get that all. We have to get that all organized. I know, I know it's in our, in the new revision of, of our ordinances. So that, that we have to work on, but one step at a time. And then, you know, of course, we have the beautiful yards of the month. So thank you for presenting that to the, I believe it's the Perez family. Thank you.
Okay, and, and since this should be a summary of what you've done this year, you guys have done a lot of work along with Councilwoman Bravo on the tree ordinance of updating, making revisions and strengthening our tree ordinance. So I want to make sure to thank you for that, to better protect our tree canopy, encourage people to, to, to treasure and appreciate their trees and nurture them and hopefully promote increased tree canopies as we move forward. So thank you for that, for you and the board.
Has it been approved and we're moving on with it?
Oh, yeah, that was already approved.
Okay, good. Just, just to be clear, I didn't know I was supposed to speak, but thank you.
You're doing for Eric, right?
Yes.
That Eric passed it on to you at the last minute.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you and Eric and everyone on the board. All right, we move to public hearing and we have an ordinance of, oh, okay, that one we're postponing. Postponing, postponing, so let's go to 8B. It's an ordinance of the second reading for emergency management.
Yes, an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, mending the city code by creating chapter 36 of the city's Code of Ordinances, Emergency Management, to provide necessary and appropriate emergency management authorizations, responsibilities and procedures, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and council, there have been no changes to this ordinance from first to second reading. So I'm happy to remind you what the ordinance is about, but it's pretty straightforward and authorizes the manager to take certain emergency actions during a declared state of emergency.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve 8B.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. Then we move to item 8C, an ordinance, a second reading on the city's comprehensive plan.
An ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, mending the city's comprehensive plan by adopting the Evaluation and Appraisal Review, the EAR, based on comprehensive plan amendments, providing for transmittal, providing for conflicts, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Oh, that's right.
Mayor, I just.
Oh, thank you, yes, with a public hearing, yes, thank you so much. I need to hold a public hearing for, well, let's do for 8B on emergency management. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone virtually? Let's give them a moment in case anyone.
No.
No, Erica?
No.
Okay, and no one in the audience wants to speak on that item? All right, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll keep the vote as it is. Let's open before we forget the public hearing for, before I forget, the public hearing for 8C, which is the, the second reading of the comprehensive plan. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that item? You don't have to sign up to speak if you're in the audience. You're welcome to come up and speak. How about virtually?
No one's raised their hand? Nope.
Okay, all right, I'll close the public hearing. And now we. Sylvia, if you could explain, I know you explained it last time a little bit, that this just was a, my understanding a tidying up on this? Or make sure.
Yes, essentially. By statute, local governments have to evaluate, review and if necessary, update their comprehensive plans every seven years to make sure that they remain consistent with statutory requirements and that they reflect changing conditions in the community and, and their context. The city updated its comprehensive plan relatedly in that seven year cycle last time in 2022. And so this time, we are on time, but we don't have to do a lot because the other one was so recent. So there's been some changes and we have addressed those changes and cleaned up the comprehensive plan language wise as much as we can this time. But, you know, we didn't really change a lot of direction or any, you know, there was no public input or anything like that to change vision or direction. And so this really is a very minor effort. The reviewing agencies did not find any objection. They're not making any comments or recommendations for changes. And so with just a few minor little typographic corrections and a couple of other little things that we tweaked between first and second, this is essentially the same document that you reviewed a few months ago.
Okay, this puts us in a timely basis on time for.
We are, we are now on track, yes.
Yes, yes.
Through the chair, I was going to ask if we can move 8C after the consent agenda? Because I do have, I, I would like to go through the comprehensive plan. I have some notes, I have questions that I just want to clarify. I know that there was a new objective added to the comprehensive plan. Sylvia, I mentioned that this was open for public comment, right? Or, or for public input?
There was, there was no public engagement because it was just a very minor cleanup of the comprehensive plan. It was basically, like I said, just kind of looking at what was done two years ago. And this time, kind of seeing what statutory changes have occurred between 2022 and now to make sure that we address those and, and that we address any like significant changing conditions that have happened between 2022 and now. Actually, the 2022 version was, it was, was adopted in 2023. So it's not even, you know, that, that old.
Yeah.
The compromise is not changing that much in that timeframe.
There's just some components I'd like to address, just for the record and for clarity. So can we do that, Mayor?
But I'm not understanding why you don't want to address them now while the item's under review.
We have a lot of, if we wanted to move.
No, no, let's go ahead.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, let's, because we haven't taken a vote on this yet. So let's go ahead and address the second reading.
So on the comp, let me go down to.
Just give me, just give me a second to open this.
Okay, me too.
Sorry. That's okay, that's okay. That's why we're here.
I did, this is a big deal, so I just, and I know that there's been changes in the last several months.
All right, I'm there.
Okay.
You let me know.
Open up here so I can know. Okay, perfect. So we have here on.
If you could let me know, like, by element and policy or objective number.
Okay, perfect, great. So looking at policy 1.18, where it says future land use category under single family residential category. We've changed the, where it says this category of land use allows single family detached homes on lots of at least, originally was 7,500 square feet. And we've shrunk them down to 5,000 square feet, which the standard lot in Miami Springs, I mean, I don't think we have any 5,000 square feet.
There are, however.
Wanted to know what the, what, what the reason for the reduction was.
So the, you, you are correct that there are regulations in our code that address the minimum lot size for single family residential lots in different zoning districts. Right now, we have a little bit of a, an issue with, with those regulations that we have, an error apparently that we have to correct. But with that said, even though the smallest lot size that we have in the code is 6,500? 6,500 square feet, that's the minimum lot size that we have in the code, is less than this. So that's one inconsistency that we have between the land, the comprehensive plan and the, the code. But in addition to that, in our analysis of the future land use, we found some lots that are actually even smaller than that and that have been rendered nonconforming by virtue of this lot size. So this is an effort to address that so that those lots are not left in limbo for the purpose of future reconstruction, et cetera, in the case of a hurricane. But it doesn't really, remember also that we have a lot of lots that are 50 foot frontage.
And so I was going to get to that.
Right.
So I don't want to make this a new standard. I know that there are some nonconforming lots and I think that we should treat them on a, at a case by case basis. Because what's going to happen is that we're going to create a new norm. And so we're going to start shrinking lotage and compounding blocks with more housing. Essentially that that's what it does. So for the ones that are 6,500 square feet, I wouldn't say that that's the norm. I would say maybe that's less than 5%.
It's a whole district, though. It's a zoning district that that's the minimum lot size. It already exists, it's a district in the zoning code.
Which zoning district is that?
It's the R1A, R1D, R1D.
That's a very, very, very right here, correct? The little light green here that I'm seeing?
Well, I think you are looking at the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, right?
No, just a zoning map.
Oh, that's a zoning map? Yeah. Actually, the, the R1D is the, the darkest of the yellows.
Okay, so that's a very small percentage.
But it's still a significant district. It's, it's a whole zoning district that exists with.
I get it, but relative to the city, it's not the majority. So I, for me, I like to leave it as it is at 7,500.
But what it does is creates, I'm sorry for interrupting. What it does, I just want to make sure that, that you understand that what this does is it creates an inconsistency between your comprehensive plan and your zoning code, which we have to avoid. That's the whole purpose of doing the update of the comprehensive plan, to make sure that our code and our comprehensive plan are in alignment.
So the code, what we're adjusting now is the comprehensive plan.
That is correct.
The code has what right now?
The code has 6,500 square feet.
Okay, so I think if anything, I don't want to start getting, changing the code.
No, we're not. We're not changing the code.
Right, but you're changing it on the comprehensive, you're allowing for a shrinkage.
What we are saying is that the minimum lot size for any district, but that doesn't mean that the zoning has to be acceptable. So in other words, you can have the minimum lot size established in the future land use category at one number. And then in your zoning districts, you can go higher than that. But that's the minimum, right, that you could ever do. We still are not touching our zoning districts because there, if we, if we have this, they will be in compliance. All of them will be in compliance because they're greater than this, right? So what we have right now, though, is one district that is not in compliance, is not consistent with the zoning. An established district that has been in place for, I don't even know how long, decades, with lots that were planted way back when, that has been rendered nonconforming with this, with this land use category, not with the zoning district. In the zoning district, they're okay. It's with this, between the comprehensive plan and the zoning code.
What do you, I get that and I still think that this should be a case by case because we're not going to cover all the nonconforming properties and there's still going to be some coming up. What do you mean by inconsistent with the, the district? Or you keep coming back to that, we need to come and make it a, a uniform thing? Because there's going to be people that maybe say they have 15,000 square foot lot and they're going to come to us, I think that we, we allow it, I think on one, where they want to come and divide the lot now.
And they can do that right now because your minimum lot size for your largest residential district is 10,000 square feet.
Yes and no, because I remember when I went through a zoning and planning board where I think it was allowed because the majority of the lot sizes were congruent.
That is correct. You look at the. That's absolutely correct.
So I don't want to create some irregularity throughout the city and the blocks.
No, no, yeah, but, but that's not the purpose of this. When I say that we are looking at something that will bring these two things into, into alignment, is because we already have a zoning district where the lots by zoning are smaller than what this comprehensive plan says. Right now, the comprehensive plan and the zoning, R1D, are misaligned. And that misalignment has existed for who knows how long. But the goal is to keep your comprehensive plan aligned with your zoning district. Your zoning district has existed for a long time with those 6,500 square foot lots, not 7,500 square foot lots. That doesn't mean that they are nonconforming because your zoning says that they are conforming with the zoning, but they're not consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's what I mean.
Right, so if anything, I like to adjust a comprehensive plan to match the current ordinance that we have, which is.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay. But I'm, I'm not finished because this is going to tie into townhomes now on the next sector. And of course, you can fit a townhome on a 5,000 square foot lot, right?
Correct.
I.
Because that's what the density in that district does.
Okay, so moving on from, that was my thing. I, I'm not on board with a 5,000 square feet.
Would you like to make that 6,500? Is that what you're saying?
If that's what our code is saying, I wouldn't want to be. Less than that. If the council is okay with that, I'm only one person with this discussion.
I, let me just ask you, going to that so that we can get to the next part and listen to that. Making it 65 feet, it still takes into account that special area? That zoning or it doesn't?
6,500 square feet is the minimum lot size in that one zoning district.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that all of the lots are 6,500 square. In fact, there are some that are a little smaller than that. So, you know, that's, but, you know, if you want to leave them nonconforming, that's okay. That's the reason why we were going a little bit lower than that, to kind of keep those in the group.
Because there's some that could be smaller.
Some are the smaller, as a matter of fact, yes. They're less than 6,500 square feet.
You said that that presented a problem down the road if, if the owners want to sell their properties?
It's, it's more.
Is that something that could come before the council and we say, you know, yes, that's nonconforming, but it's something that, you know?
It is more in the case of substantial improvement, like when a, a structure gets destroyed in a hurricane or something like that. Because then it has to, the lot has to come into compliance.
Through the chair, just so you know, Mayor, with nonconforming properties, and let's just say there shouldn't title notes and conveyances that a property has that's noted to that property. So they will tell you, you know, if your property has a limitation or is, is a nonconforming property, you typically get that through your transfer of ownership documents. So if that's something that the owner or the buyer is willing to move forward with, then they already understand that they're subject to certain setbacks and regulations that the code has. So they may sometimes, there's some properties that instead of its existing structure facing one street and they want to make it bigger, they may have to come through zoning and planning to request to face their door the other way so that they could extend to the back and such. So I think that's just, that's just, it's nothing new, like Sylvia said.
No, because we know we have irregular lots throughout.
Right, and that's, that's, yeah, that's not an issue, nonconforming. I mean, you know, if you have a nonconforming structure and you continue to use, you can continue it forever. But if there is damage such that the structure is destroyed before, below or, or more than the 50% of substantial improvement, insurance can be an issue, mortgages can be an issue. Those are the things that can be an issue sometimes, so.
I don't think that's, you, you're going to get insured on a property on the, on the, on the, not typically on the land, but I don't think that an insurance company is going to turn you away for, for a, a building that, or a single family house that you want to build with proposed plans. If it's being allowed, it's, it's an insurable building. I don't, I don't see what, how they would discriminate the type of.
We're sort of getting away.
Okay, well, let's, we could move on. I, I don't, I don't like the 5,000.
No, and, and that is, that is okay if you, if you. No, and and that is, that is okay. If you, if you all agree to, you know, m- my goal here is to make sure. That we are not inconsistent between our zoning and our comprehensive plan. And that people don't get squeezed out of compliance because we have an inconsistency, right? So right now, there are lots that are inconsistent, um even with their own zoning, which, you know. As the councilwoman pointed out, if they're, you know, not legally nonconforming, that's okay. That's not a problem. Uh but we should not on purpose make them nonconforming if we can't avoid it. And we have this opportunity with this update, because I'm not sure why this hasn't been caught before that. There was this inconsistency. You you again, this R one D zoning district has been in place. Um, I don't know how long, to be honest, uh, you know, I don't have the code in front of me, but um, se- several decades, you know. Those, those uh uh residential districts have existed for a long time, so. You wanna go to the next one?
Yeah, so the next, um, the next one, or it says on the same policy, one point, one point eight. Multi-family residential category.
Right.
Um, it says here, the category of land use allows multi-family and single-family. Attached residential development up to twenty dwelling units per acre. Obviously, if that change would go into effect at the five thousand, right? Um. My concern here is. What was it that I put here? Says this, the cited statute requires local units of government to allow community residential homes. Within six or fewer residents in single-family residential areas, provided that they're at least a thousand feet apart. It requires local units of government to allow community residential homes within. With up to fourteen residents in multi-family areas. So can you explain to me if that is. Painting a combination of single-family housing intertwined with townhomes?
Yeah, are are you, I'm sorry.
On the multi-family residential category.
Are you referring to the language that is stricken through?
Hmm, no. It's the, it's, is it str- oh, it's stricken through?
It's it's str- it's stricken.
Okay, but wait, oh, because I have here.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, so that was removed completely. So no, uh, sorry, the note, the townhome verbiage was completely removed here. Um, and now it's just.
It was, it was replaced, actually, yeah.
Okay, so I don't know what I'm seeing here.
No, I'm, yeah, the, we were trying to clean up that policy. Because the screeners note was unnecessary, I mean, you you don't really do that in a policy, so we removed that. And then the other language was just moved up and.
The language for the policy one point, one point six, just to make sure I have the right one on my end, the one that was.
One point one.
One point, one point six.
One point, one point six. That's. The city will continue to permit mixed-use development and promote affordable housing opportunities to residents of various income levels.
Okay, so we, did we remove? I'm sorry, it's my fault, but we'll go back to that later. We're on one point, one point eight.
Eight, yes.
Just so many things. Okay, so. Okay, so it says, single-family detached residential units may be allowed at a density of one dwelling unit per five thousand, which it's not something we wanna do. Are allocated to single-family use. Townhouse residential units may be allowed at a density of one townhouse per. Three thousand five hundred square feet of site area. This land use category may be effectuated by one or more zoning districts. Um, so my question, I just wanna clarify that we're not gonna be with this type of verbiage. It's like. Townhomes and single families mixed together on a block.
No, what what it is, is that your zoning is what is called perimetal. It means that a zoning district of a higher density or intensity, like multi-family. Can allow or does allow the uses that are in the. In the, in the lower zoning districts, like single family. So even though this. Um, policy is geared towards your multi-family zoning districts. These districts can allow single-family zone, uh, single-family residential structures to be built in those districts. That's, that's the way it has been. That language was there before. All we did was move it from the bottom to the top. So the, there's, where you see that there's language stricken at the bottom of that policy. It already said there, single-family detached residential units may be allowed at a density of one dwelling unit per, and it said seventy five hundred square feet. Uh of site allocated to single-family use. And then it talked this, uh, it didn't really talk about the townhouses or the townhouse. Uh, townhouses.
But now we are.
We have to, because you have a zoning district called townhouses or townhomes.
I do.
Yes, yes, we do.
I.
It doesn't exist on the map, but the zoning district as a, as a district exists.
So should that be here?
Only if you want to create a townhouse zoning district. It doesn't exist today. I mean, some people come in sometimes to see me and say, where can I do townhouses in the city? And I'm like, well, there's no zoning district.
See, that, that, that's, that's an issue. I need to under, I need to know where these townhomes could be placed.
Right now.
One thing.
Right now, by zoning, nowhere, but somebody could come in. And pro- and 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 make a proposal to you to amend the zoning map. To create a townhouse, townhouse district. I'm sounding Canadian, townhouse, sorry. Um. So what, but what we are trying to do here in the comprehensive plan again is to. Um, align your zoning code, which already has a townhouse district. With your comprehensive plan, which doesn't say anything about townhouses. That's, that's really all it is.
I think I had to look at the zoning code then. So we have a, um.
Yeah, Sylvia, when you're talking about the zoning codes and, you know, a lot of our zoning codes, we know are outdated or, you know, have been there. So I guess from what I'm hearing is, um. Do we? If we're. If we're um updating our comprehensive plan to match with our zoning code. But yet our zoning codes are outdated and need to be updated and revised, or is that really something we wanna do, knowing?
Well, i- it depends, because we don't know what you're gonna do in the zoning code, right? You could decide that you do want a townhouse district, or you could decide that you don't, right? At this point, we're not making that decision. But until we make that decision, which will come later, as it should. The comprehensive plan should come first, the zoning code should come later. Until we do, we need to make sure that in our policy framework. We have the ability to make that decision without coming back and changing the comprehensive plan. You can still have some language in your comprehensive plan zoning that says townhouse. And you could choose not to implement it in your zoning code. Because essentially, when you have uh these broad future land use categories. You could have a single zoning district implement them in the code. Or you could have multiple zoning districts implement a single future land use category. And in fact, you, you already do that. You have single-family residential as a, as a, as a sole category here in in the future land use map, um, um, um. The future land use element. And then it is implemented in four different zoning districts in your zoning code, right? R one A, one B, one C, one D. Uh, your multi-family residential is implemented. Into two multi-family residential districts, not three, even though we have. Three of them, but one of them is not represented in, on the map also. You know, it's like low, medium, high density. Uh, multi-family, and one of them is just not on the map. Uh, and also, you have duplex, and also you have townhouses. And neither of those are represented on the map either. So what it means is that. This gives you a framework for implementing in the zoning, however you choose. However, this, you know, many districts or, you know, or or few districts you want to use to implement the broader policy. That's the goal.
But isn't a comprehension plan a city's intention to implement certain features to the city? Because then it's going to be inconsistent with our, so we're gonna have to be, we're gonna be pressed. Whatever we put here, we're gonna be pressed to update the ordinance. So this, this whole comprehension plan is just wholly intentional. And I'm, I'm gonna tell you when, when we get to the end of this, because there was a, a very big item that was added to the comprehensive plan that. Um, I don't, I mean, it's a, it's a big deal and it should be discussed, which is fine. Um, I don't have any more questions on that. I just wanna, I, I.
Well, let's do this. You brought up something, um. I, I think we need to discuss it all now. I don't see any reason that, you know, I mean, we can postpone the other meeting that we're doing, but this is important. Um, so.
I have more.
Uh, okay, so going back to your first item, because maybe the best way to do it is as you bring up something or as we discuss something.
Can make a motion?
Right. Well, you had um suggested you had wanted to see the first item is sixty five.
Sixty five hundred?
Okay.
No, less than that.
No, less than that. Okay, is there any reason that, significant reason, and I know you explained it, but that.
It'll render some, I mean, it'll ki- it'll keep some lots nonconforming, but it's gonna be.
For the most part.
Maybe less than the ones that.
Okay.
Are right now, and it will make us consistent.
Close. Okay, so is there any on the council, are we all, does every, is everyone okay with that, with moving it to? Uh, councilman, uh, vice mayor Vasquez?
I'm good.
Okay, so maybe, uh, because I guessing we'll have to make an amendment and all these changes, but you could, we could just add that now of saying that's something we'd like to, okay? So then with the other item.
Okay, so the next one was about the town. That's something that as a council, we would have to um discuss and see if that's something that we want in our future. But for me, a townhome, um, some legally are are cat- are are structured as lot and block townhomes. And lot and block townhomes are treated as single-family housing.
They are.
So you can, you can't deny a build out of a townhome um in between two single-family homehouses. So, you know what I mean? Like, let's say there's an empty lot between two sing- single-family homes, and they're proposing a, a townhome structure. They could do two attached townhomes, and they're considered lot and block with their own water meters with.
Correct.
So what I'm trying to avoid is things that I see in Westchester happening, where you have or or um down. Towards the Grove off of Twenty Seventh and Thirty Second, where you have these, these double townhomes being built between single-family homes. So I just don't know if this is the type of verbiage that it is, and that's why I wanted some clarity.
Not, not necessarily. Again, you already have a townhome or townhouse zoning district in your code. And have a, you have a duplex. It's not on the map. It's in the text. So the districts exist. They just have not been effectuated.
Okay.
Into a zoning district.
Can you add it to our map so we can see where that's?
Somebody, somebody could, but we, the city hasn't done it. In other words, the city has not created. An actual district on the ground, but the possibility exists on paper. That you could do it or that somebody could come and ask for that amendment.
Right.
But that already exists in the code.
Okay, so.
So we're, by by putting this language, I'm sorry, let me just kinda finish that. By putting this language here, we're not creating a new possibility. Because that possibility already exists. So if you choose to leave. Those two zoning districts off the map, you can do that. They're still on paper in the code. And if you chose to eliminate them, you could do that still, because this. Language is in a multi-family residential future land use category. That just includes a broad set of multi-family uses.
Okay.
Whether that's duplex or um or or attached homes or multi-family apartment buildings. Um, but it also includes the possibility of building a single-family residential uh structure in this zoning district. It doesn't preclude it. And that's what I wanted to.
I think to clarify what the councilwoman was asking, you could do it one way, but not the other way. In other words.
Yes.
Because the townhouse, uh, townhouse category uh regulations or or policies are under the multi-family. They would only be applicable within multi-family on the flume, on your future land use map. And then within the multi-family zoning districts.
That, that is correct right now.
We can sort of.
Yeah.
Transfer the townhouse regulations from where they are in the zoning code now. That is sort of an amorphous.
Yes.
Concept, right? And transfer it into the multi-family, if that's something that the council wanted to do. But I think, to be clear, because it's here in the multi-family on your future land use element. It's, it's not going to provide for what you're suggesting, because that single-family zoning district is only single-family. So you can't put in something. Detached, yes. You can't put that. Attached, single-family townhouse into the detached, single-family zoning. Does that make sense?
I get it. I just want anything that has to do with mixed, um, sorry, with multi-family. Whatever districts we have set aside now for mo- uh, multi-family, I think that the townhomes should fall within those areas too. I don't wanna.
And that's where it is, yes. That, that's where it is.
That's exactly what's happening here. So you, just by, by way of background for everyone's knowledge. In this document, you have a future land use map. And this document, like the map, are your foundation. They're sort of your constitution. You implement this document through your zoning code. And so what Sylvia was explaining earlier about having the five thousand versus sixty five hundred versus seventy five hundred. Okay, this is a minimum. You could say, sure, our comprehensive plan says this is the minimum, but in our zoning code. We are going to say the minimum is seventy five hundred.
Right.
But you just can't go below this threshold.
Right.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. And so you're, when we look at that future land use map. That is, again, you, you can sort of layer the two maps. And so technically, and there are errors on this all the time. In cities all over the place. Um, so you can have your future land use map as sort of the base map. And then you can throw your zoning map on top of it. And your zoning districts, for example, your RS one, RS two, RS three. Or, or here are one C. Um, should go over the parts of the future land use map that are single-family. Okay, so it's those broad categories in the future land use map, and then they start getting more detailed within your zoning map. So I just want to make sure everybody has that sort of background.
Okay.
Thank you, Heidi. So we'll just leave um the multi-family residential, whatever it is that we have on our map right now, that would facilitate.
The map is not changing, by the way. We're not making any changes to the future land use map. Just, just to be clear, you know, there were a few errors that we found. Um. That were corrected, but aside from that, we have not changed the land use designation of any property. For example, this is not even an error, but um. Uh, your, um. Which one I'm thinking of? Yes, twenty five, yeah, four twenty five S plan ad. That was, that was an error in the future land use map. And you, not very long ago, uh. Approved uh an amendment to the future land use map and to the zoning. To put it back to single-family residential use. But this map, as it was in the comprehensive plan. Until now, did not reflect that. So we did that. So those are the small changes that you will see in the map. But no wholesale or larger or significant changes. To anything that was already in the map as far as the land use designations.
Okay, so what are we changing here then in the multi-family residential category? Is there anything that we need to change here? Based on what we just, what we spoke about, about the townhome um verbiage? No, right?
I'm kind of feeling at this point, based on everything you said and what, um.
You have to change.
Clarified that if, we can change, yeah, that's the only thing, to change it to sixty five hundred. Um.
And the townho- the townhouse residential units may, all that needs to be, um. Removed. I don't see why that should be in there.
But didn't you say that it should be, the townhouses should be in multi-family?
Is that added verbiage that we have to add in, in the, in the multifamily districts? Because we don't have that verbiage.
It, it's in there, under that category, multifamily residential category.
I see, I see here, I, I'm reading townhouse residential units may be allowed at a density of one townhouse per three thousand five hundred square. Feet of site area. This land use category may be effectuated by one or more zoning districts.
That, that refers to the multifamily residential category.
I wouldn't, I, that. I wouldn't have known that.
That's how the, the beginning of the paragraph starts with multifamily residential category and then goes on to explain that this category. Allows for these types of things.
But it says effectuated by one or more zoning districts.
Correct. So that's what I was explaining. In the example of multifamily. You can have different types of multifamily. And I'm just gonna talk without using uh acronyms. Think of multifamily in the city of Miami. You have some multifamily that are two stories, and then you have some that are fifty stories, right? They're both multifamily. So under your future land use map, under this category of multifamily. They're all multifamily. They're all there, but you have different zoning districts that say. It, to, to sort of provide for tho- that sort of um. What's the pyramid?
Yeah.
Where you have, you know, higher uh density in one place where it gets you to those fifty-story skyscrapers. And then it goes down and it scales down and it scales down till you get to the two-story, for example. And so all of those are different zoning cat- zoning districts. So you have different regulations. In order to get you to. A, a building that's two stories versus a building that's fifty.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, ju- just to give you a more specific example. We have this broad multifamily residential land use category. That allows multifamily and single-family attached residential. And also allows single-family detached. That's what this language is in here is, right? The broad multifamily residential. The way that this is implemented in the code right now. Is that we have three multifamily residential zoning districts that implement this one land use category. And that's what that language means.
We have three multifamilies?
We have three multifamily residential districts in the code, not in the zoning map. Then the ma- in the zoning map, there are two right now. So there's two parts of that implementation, right? One is to establish the zoning districts in the text. And then to translate those onto the map. And that part of the translation doesn't always happen for every single district.
Okay, we need to identify that. I can't, I can't, I don't know, because you said there's a third one. I don't even know what the third one is. And I don't know where this.
Mayor.
But it, yeah.
If, if I may, um, I think, I think maybe Jackie, your concerns. Can be addressed in the zoning with, with the zoning codes and various ordinances, and we can bring those issues back. Um, and, and make adjustments to the actual zoning code. Um, to address and, and to make sure we take care of your, your concerns.
There you go.
Um, and then we can pass this, and this is just like they said, this is the bare minimums, is what we have to make it. Uh, compliant with what we currently have in the books or to make them.
Actually, yeah, our, our, our goal is to be consistent and also consistent with our own policies. And consistent with the statutory requirements, which requires us to be consistent with our own policies.
Right.
So, yeah.
I think, I think we can achieve and, and address your concerns through zoning. Um, and while at the same time approving this with the, the change that you made.
I think something that we've discussed for a long time is our codes that we need to make.
And zone.
Gradual, and we had intended to do that, and I think we did it with the signs, but we never really went any further of, you know, biting off a piece. We'll never.
Remember that it's in my budget.
Yes. You know, it's, it's just, we're a hundred-year-old city and like, you know, I've mentioned a lot of times, um, you know, things were. You know, passed in the forties, fifties, sixties, and some of those things that even were passed in the sixties were then revised in the nineties or in two thousand. I mean. That's what happens when you're a hundred-year-old city, so um.
And it is.
And perhaps that's.
I'm sorry.
What we need to do is, is, you know, really stop kicking the can like we do with the codes and um. You know, and dig into them and, and make them.
It is typically a policy of. Of any comprehensive plan that I know to say that the city shall. Review, revise, update periodically. Your zoning code to make sure that it reflects the policies of the comprehensive plan in a way that makes sense. And um, I think that the city has been doing that sort of incrementally and piecemeal. And um.
Bless you.
Bless you. That doesn't, um, that doesn't help to maintain internal consistency or consistency between the comp plan and the zoning code.
Right, um, moving on to the airport golf district. It says, um, in two thousand seven, the city Mary Springs abolished the airport, marine and highway business district to create three separate districts in its place. Descriptions of the new districts are as below. Airport Golf District, the area comprising this district is bounded by Curtis Parkway, Fairway Drive and Zirun. This district is intended to encourage a wide range of compatible and complementary uses such as. Um, it says office and commercial business, restaurants, hotels, retail service operations, residential development. And then we s- we took off in accordance with the city charter.
Yes, because that's, it's basically a given, you know, the city charter exists, you know, so.
I, I don't, it's not a given for me. I think that that's strong verbiage. I would like to add that back on.
Okay.
Personally.
Is there any objection to that?
Can I get clarification as to why?
Because it's redundant. I mean, the city charter is obviously going to supersede. This, so.
I mean, if you think that's more parsimonious, why would we? I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm going with your recommendation, right?
It, it's up to you. I mean, we just kind of were reading through, we felt that. It, it's unnecessary to say that because the city charter is established and is established in that way, and it supersedes this. These policies.
Right.
But with respect to the height of multifamily redevelopment, so. That's, that's, that's really all. I, I think it was.
A matter of just removing extraneous.
That's correct.
Language. It, it's a given that it's with the.
To me, it is a given, and I think that, you know, as, as a planner. I know that, and, and, and nobody, I mean, if somebody comes mistakenly and says, well, it doesn't say. That, you know, the city charter, I, I will tell them that, you know, the city charter supersedes. And, and there's nothing here to suggest that. Even without that language, there's nothing here to suggest that multifamily residential could occur contrary to the charter.
Okay, so I, I don't know, I'm a, I'm a, not really. I'm a person of clarity. If anything, if it's a given, maybe we should change, put tha- put that verbiage in the, in the district description. So it says, this district is intended to encourage a wide range of cap- uh, compatible and complementary uses. Such as to wit in accordance with our city charter.
But none of the other uses are.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't know, for me to, to say it's a given, I don't know. When people just say, oh, because it's a given, I'm, I'm a skeptic. I don't know, maybe it's a, but i- if it was there before, I, I don't know what, whoever put it there before, what the significance was. There was a purpose for it, no? I'm looking to you for, for.
I, I cannot.
No.
I cannot make assumptions about the intention, but I have found that there's a lot of. And, and mind you, this is um something that I find a lot in um comprehensive plans that also have been done over time. You know, you have a lot of different authors and different styles of writing, and some of them use a lot of sort of unnecessary wording. Uh, and some of them. Actually, I'm not gonna say that I'm a perfect writer, but you know, I, I know that some of them are worse writers than I can claim to be. Um, and, um, and so, you know, we try to clean the language. Um, and, and make it, um, I mean, there's enough jargon and legal, and legalese in these documents. That, you know, there are some things that don't need to be there to model it even more. It's my.
Councilwoman, go ahead and move on to the other one, because I'm, from what I'm gathering, no one has any interest in, in leaving that in since. From what you're explaining, it would should be then on every sentence saying consistent with the charter.
Well, that's why I said.
And so if it's not.
And by the way, just as a note, in the next uh land use district, which is the Abraham Track District. We completely removed residential development in accordance with the city charter. We removed that whole sentence because residential is not possible. In the Abraham Track District by Airport zoning, and so that language shouldn't even be there.
Okay, um. Okay, that's fine. And then let's go on to the next one. It says, um, right within that, under that number seven.
Number seven.
Where it talks about, it says, other enterprises not inconsistent with the intent of the district that may be provided in the zoning code. Development within this district shall be permitted a floor ratio, a, a floating. Uh, floor ratio of one to two. Of one point oh by right. Can you just explain why we provide, provided a floating ratio?
We were trying to be consistent with the, the, all the other, so we, we did remove the language that says. Be- before two thousand seven, this was this district, and now we gotten rid, I mean, that's, that's narrative, that doesn't need to be. That's not the purpose of the comprehensive plan to pro- provide narrative. You do that elsewhere. Um, but in the description of the other districts, the FAR is described as floating. Because there's a base FAR in, in the implementation, in the implementation, which is in the zoning, there's a base FAR, and then there's the incentive. FAR. And so that's what that means in that context. So we were trying to make the wording of this. Land use district consistent with the wording of the Abraham Track and the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street District, which also both say that it's a floating FAR.
Do you have any input on that? I know you're all about the FAR.
That's fine for now. I mean, right now it's consistency, so we're not gonna. Build by every single district at this point.
And, and, and the reason why it made sense to add it here is because if this district did not have an incentive. You know, system in the zoning, then it would be unnecessary to call it a floating FAR, but it does. So it's an omission. I think that was made in error.
Okay, um, going down to the Abraham Track.
Mm-hmm.
District, number five, where you said that they completely removed the residential development.
Yes.
Um, the Abraham Track cannot do um apartments there?
No, because this airport zoning, and this is something that, you know, I will go over in that. Uh, workshop when we present our findings, but the airport zoning district. Has uh the most extreme restrictions on development in this area. Um, it's, it's right in the path of active um, um, runway. And assembly and residential uses, any kind of assembly use and residential uses are not permitted by the zoning. Uh, regulations, by the zoning restrictions.
It's true. But is that all the whole zoning there? Because some portions of the lots are, I suppose, are not off.
No, not at, not at all. Those two uses, not at all in this area. We have other uses that can be. There, and, and it's a wide range of potential other uses. But we have severe restrictions on, on, on residential and anything that is kind of an assembly, schools, churches, that kind of thing. Cannot be there. And we also have great restrictions on the building height. Uh, which also kind of makes it um difficult to uh have residential in multifamily. Uh, development format.
I thought there were some portions. I mean, industrial use is the most feasible stuff anywhere there, but.
Correct.
At the end of the day, I thought there was a portion that does not part of the flight, but.
No.
As I said, industrial is probably the end result of the highest and best use analysis, but.
I promise you, I was gonna show you some maps.
Okay. I know, yeah, it's like, I just thought it was like a little.
But I will.
But, that's fine.
Yeah.
Any other comments? On that, on that topic, no. On the next hour, not, um.
Still on the comprehensive plan. No, go on.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, um, now we're moving on to public recreational open space category.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this category of land use allows public non-commercial recreational uses such as passive and active parks, playgrounds, golf courses. And auxiliary and secondary uses supportive of such activities. Um, it was scratched out, says buildings within this category shall be limited to twenty feet.
Mm-hmm.
Of height and ten percent of lot coverage. And now the height here that was um changed, it was increased to forty feet. Um, and utilize a floor ratio of up to one point five. Final determination of the approved and authorized FAR for any proposed project. Shall remain within the city council and be directly dependent upon the meeting of certain criteria and incentive provisions set within the zoning code. Can you expect, explain?
Sure, yeah. You will find similar language in this category and the next two, right? Um, and we try to be consistent throughout, but the reason why we changed this is because. Your zoning districts that implement these future land use categories actually have already higher. Building height and higher intensity than what was in the comprehensive plan. In other words, here we had another inconsistency between what was implemented in the zoning code. And what the comprehensive plan said. And some of your uh recreational buildings actually exceeded. As built by zoning exceeded the buil- the, the building height and the um FAR. That was in this category, so. We don't want to, well, first of all, obviously, again, you know, not to sound like a broken record, but we want to make sure that we. Align these things, right? We want to make sure that they align. And also. We already have permitted. Public uses, recreational uses, churches and so on that. Are consistent with the zoning, but they're not consistent with the comprehensive plan because that inconsistency existed internally.
So I understand that the public recreational buildings.
Yeah.
Right? Would go up to forty, which is, you know, for community use and that's a public benefit.
Right.
But going to public building category.
Mm-hmm.
Are we, we're still talking about government buildings as well? We're not talking about private sector?
Um, well, it includes government buildings, including administrative buildings and healthcare facilities where compatible. With the surrounding area. That's what that category has said. Um, public parks, public utilities are also permitted.
Because we increased the public recreational open spaces to forty feet, we also have to increase the public building category to forty feet?
We want it to be consistent with what's in the zoning.
Uh, I'm a little bit fury with that, if it's, if it's gonna get into the public sector. Um, I don't know what type of buildings we could be talking about in the future.
Uh, city hall, for example?
Okay, but that's, that's, that's city.
Yeah.
What about private sector? You said that?
No.
No?
No. No, this is a public building category, government buildings. Now, could you make a deal with a private se- sector party to build you a city hall? You could do that, but it would still be city hall.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Oh, the FAR increased here. Oh, wait. Okay, that's, that's a floating floor ratio of three point oh, but that's still subject to city. I don't know, I'm sorry, we have to go back really quick.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a floating ratio of up to three point oh for the Abraham District.
Yes.
Why is it different from the other flo- uh, floating floor ratio of one to two? But that's, that's already, I mean, three is a lot.
Airport, well, actually, that's, that's, that's what's in the code. For the Abraham Track and for the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. Uh, the uh floor ratio that is already in the code and many buildings that have been built in your Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. Have been built at three point zero already.
Okay.
Closer.
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, this is just to make sure that they align.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, moving on to policy one point two point four.
Yeah.
Under objective one point two redevelopment and renewal. I just had a question. The verbiage says restrict new retail facilities in the downtown development. Area to allowable uses in size, which is compatible and consistent with the character. So it's saying that we're not gonna allow anything to come in that's out of place with what. out of place with what is currently.
Yeah, we changed from size to scale because scale is more of a character issue. Size is, you know, is something that you put in your code. That would be your forty, fifty, whatever, you know, and, and you have, uh, you have your charter as well. Um, but.
The charter is important.
Yeah. Well, um, but aside from that, the language was already there, the restrict new retail facilities to allowable uses. That language was already there.
Um, okay, so we're gonna go to objective one point nine, which is innovative development regulations.
Give me just a second to get there, please. I'm sorry. One point?
Objective one point nine, innovative development regulations.
One, oh yeah, sorry. I skipped it. Okay.
And then we're gonna look at, um, the policy under that one point nine point one. It says, the city will pursue the below techniques as a mean for accomplishing the objectives to provide adequate sites for, which is scratched out, low, very low and moderate income housing, including but not limited to mixed use development, environmental cautious or green housing. And then the uh letter C was it, it used to say the use of traffic circulators throughout the city routed near affordable housing developments. And now it just says, see a multi, multimodal transportation system throughout the city. So that's a very drastic change in verbiage.
Well.
What's the reason behind that?
The reason to change from just a traffics, we felt that traffic circulators was very specific and very restricted. That's not the only way in which you can route traffic appropriately. And so we wanted the policy to be a little bit broader so that in the implementation, whether that's in the code or a program, uh, an capital improvement project, for example, you would not be limited to just that. There are other ways to accomplish the same goal. Um, there are new techniques, new technologies and so.
I get it, but it's accommodate something. So I saw here that before we had routed near affordable housing developments. I don't know where that, I guess that was just.
That's the other thing. I'm not really sure what that meant and why it singled out only, I mean, I guess it's because it said low, very low and moderate income before. Um, and uh we, we just struck that because we think that the city wants to not just cover that, but the whole spectrum of housing, including workforce housing, which is in a different category. And so that's why, you know, we didn't want to just single out affordable housing developments.
Right. Now it says a variety of housing types and income perhaps.
Correct.
To be politically correct. All right. Um, let's go now to objective one point nine.
One point nine.
We're still there on innovative. Oh, it was doubled. I, I printed it out twice. All right. Let's move on here. All right, we're going to go to objective one point one six. It's under that seam.
Yes, I'm almost there. Okay.
Um. I guess we added in here, the city will adapt land development code slash regulations that enhance the redevelopment potential of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street and Abraham Track, which is our full right to change the charter. And we also added in the airport golf dis- district. So I guess we were just missing that because in our zoning code, we have the airport golf district?
You, you do.
Okay.
Um, but the reason why I added it here is because at some point you may also want to take a look at that and see where the zoning that is in place is really giving you what you need in that area. So that's, that's the only reason.
Okay. And then policy one point, uh, sixteen point two. All that was removed. I guess it was redundant, right? It was, it was duplicate because I can see.
Because we already have done that, essentially. That's already done.
Perfect. Now going to historical resources. I know we had a list of historical addresses and sites. I see that it was consolidated. We used to have noted thirty-four, now we're down to eighteen. So I guess you, on the new list versus the old one that was slashed out. I guess these are the actual historical sites that are actuals, because we had.
Yes.
Not actuals in the old.
Yeah, these are verified.
Okay, so these are verified. Yeah, cause I'm like, we had thirty-four and now we're down to, uh, we removed sixteen. So I just wanted to, for the record, to make sure that that was the case. Perfect. Good to know. Um. Okay, so here we have, uh, under transport element, objective one point one. Motorized and non-motorized transportation system. I had a question or more, I needed a copy of, I couldn't find it. Says, a city shall regulate the timing of development to maintain at least the following peak period hour le- levels of service standard on roadways, roadways that lie within the municipality boundaries. The first bullet says the level of service standard adopted by the Miami Dade County Comprehensive Development, Development Master Plan for all states and county roadways within Miami Springs, the Miami Dade County standards are as follows. First bullet. Where extraordinary transit service such as a commuter rail or express bus service exists, parallel road, roadways within half a mile shall operate at no greater than less of service of level E plus twenty percent of their capacity. This standard shall apply to Northwest Thirty Sixth Street.
Yeah.
So is this part, if this proposal that was proposed, so is that would be a benefit to that? I guess those preliminary um developments that we received.
This language has been there. We're not changing it, but that's language that is in the, um, is it in the, um, uh, in the, um, state and the?
The master.
In the, then, in the, um, in the county TPO. Uh, it's sort of standard language. We are saying that it applies to no, we are saying that it applies to no Thirty Sixth Street, but that, that was already said there. We're not changing that, but the language where it talks about extraordinary service, commuter rail, uh, within half mile shall operate at the standard level of service plus twenty percent. That's kind of the standard that we are taking from the state for that type of road.
And how does that impact the inner city? Like it says, half a mile, roads within half a mile shall operate.
At no greater than LOE, so that, so that's a good question. I, I don't have the answer for you right now. Uh, like I said, we haven't changed that policy, but we can look into it.
Yeah, before I commit to something like that, I need to know what that is. But again, we have four of us up here, but it's good to know because I don't know what that impact means for, um, the transit in and out of the city per se.
Right. But this is, this is, um, this is language that has to be in the comprehensive plan for those roads, for those types of roads. I mean, like we, for, just like we have to make our com plan and our land use, um, and the, and our zoning code consistent. We as a community and all local governments also have to make their local comprehensive plans consistent with the county and with the regional and with the state comprehensive plans. And so there's language that comes from those that we have to sort of take.
Erica, um, can we get a copy or I would like a copy. I would try to look for it. I couldn't find it for the Miami Dade County Comprehensive Development Master Plan. It says, um, for the state and county, I just wanna know what road, I know, I know some of the roadways that, that come through Miami Springs, but I, I need to know what their vision is. I, I don't know what that means per se.
Well, Northwest Thirty Sixth Street is.
The state road.
State.
Well, that, yeah, that, no. That I'm worried about. It makes sense to have transit there. Um, and then it says here, I don't know what these levels mean. Level, level of service D for all local roads within Miami Springs. What do, what do these levels mean?
Um, well, the, the hierarchy is l- level of service A is the top free flowing traffic that you would see. Uh, maybe not in Miami Dade County, but somewhere else you could see in a, an interstate perhaps. Um, and then it goes down to B, C, D, and E. F is a failing level of service. E is the lowest threshold of level of service. And D is just above that. So what, what, what those, um, levels of service indicate is the um, the degree to which traffic flows freely at peak hour, for example, right? Um, and it, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm no traffic engineer and I don't really have, you know.
Kind of.
Yeah.
But.
Approach.
Um, some of that levels have changed and just before our highs in ten years.
Yes.
You know, where roads that, you know, before, now they're gridlocked, not just during.
Right.
Fresh hour, but.
And.
Much all the.
FDOT has shifted their standards as well in terms of like where before a, say, you know, this type of roadway had a desirable level of service of C. Now realistically, B is the best that you can do, you know?
No. Yeah, it's just, just no more, there's not enough space or density capacity, right? So that's what happened.
Well, everybody strives.
Um, and then moving on to policy under their policy one point one point three. The city shall approve no alteration in the existing traffic circulation system, which materially reduces the continuity, continuity, continuity and right away of arterials or collectors shown on the future transportation map. You gave us a copy of that, right?
I'm sorry?
A future transportation map?
It, it should be in the map series that follows this element. So each element that has maps has the text and then the maps right behind.
And the land use.
So in this document I've been looking, I'm sorry, forty, page forty-five is the start.
Oh, it's on, on page forty-five?
Yes.
It's all the way up there. Okay. Let me go back.
I like to put my maps where.
I just, I had on, on eighty-something, I had three maps where I didn't know. I don't know what I'd do without this iPad. No, it's not, it's not showing on for me. Hold on. All right, anyways, um, oh, I found it. La- level of service for state and county facilities, is that what it is?
Uh, I believe so. Yeah. That's the first one. Yes.
Okay. Um.
Mayor.
I hear that. That's it.
Can I, can I just jump in?
Yes.
Um, I, is there any way that we can defer the vote on this second reading to allow for all the questions to be answered with the planner? So that, I mean, we've been at this for an hour and ten minutes. And we still, we paused the LPA so that we could get back to it. I think that, I mean, it's either that or, or take it, it's either that or take a motion, but I, I respect that, that the councilwoman has questions, but I, I think that we could defer the second read, the vote on the second reading of this to give time.
Let me just fast forward then to, to one objective I think is important to talk about, although it leans up to that.
But we still have to eventually take a vote on this. So if.
Okay.
And we want to, um.
We could defer it.
We can defer it if you like, um.
Just remember that we have, uh.
I, I know I got a letter.
We have timeframes.
Yeah.
We have timeframes.
From the state saying, and that's, and a lot of these things.
Doesn't have to be tonight, but you know.
Right. And a lot of these things are what we've talked about is tidying it up. And I understand your questions, but your, your questions kind of come back to what Sylvia said of, you know, tidying up, um, the comprehensive plan of things that didn't really match with our zoning and stuff. But you're certainly entitled to, to ask your questions. So, um.
Can, can we defer?
Well, do you have a lot more?
I, I just wanna talk about an objective that was added to the comprehensive plan that was not there before. And I know it's not in our code, which is objective one point seven, which is development of new housing.
Uh, you're talking the housing element?
Yeah. So can you just explain everything there on that objective for us?
Right. Um. This is, you know, that the state gives you a certain number of topics in the statutes that have to be covered in the comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan didn't talk anything at all about uh, new housing. So we added this to kind of address that. And it's, I think, one of the only ones that we added, which include, by the way, some language with regards to the live local act. This is the section that, that has that language at the end. Um, we, we have to address it and we figured this is the opportunity to put something in our, in our comprehensive plan. Um, it's, it's not a policy that says we will just not do it because that's not something that we can do. But it says, at least, you know, those two uh policies, um, are, are meant to at least say, this is how we will do it. And not the specifics of it, because that again gets implemented in the zoning code. But at least by policy here, we're saying this is how we will address it. Um, so that's kind of what we have done. Um.
Sylvia, correct me if.
Yeah.
I'm wrong on that. And maybe if you want, just read it out, but what we're saying with that, my understanding when I reviewed that was that it's giving us the authority to say, we're not just accepting live local, just because the state has said we have to accept it, that this is, you know, we can't say.
We're not, but not really saying that, but we're saying, if we find, if we find out that it doesn't apply with, if we find out it doesn't apply to us because of this exception, then we will not do it. Essentially, that's what we're saying.
And what exception is that?
The exception is, um, that, um, in, in the amended act, um, there's, um, I, I, they don't call it an exception, but it precludes live local projects within a quarter mile of either side of an existing or planned airport runway extending for a distance of ten thousand feet from either edge of the runway. So we have to kind of do the analysis still to see and, 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 and the problem is not meas- measuring that. That's the easy part, but I think it's a matter of how this language gets interpreted, what, what it means. Um, uh, existing or planned airport runway, I've seen some language that talks about active. You know, so I think there's a little bit of.
So it gives us the opportunity to.
For us to.
Interpret it ourselves.
Potentially, potentially.
So in the zoning code, we have nothing verbalizing about the live.
Not yet.
Kind of like working backwards here. I think.
Well, remember we had a presentation a few months ago where I asked, um, Susan from Wyserota to make a presentation. So all the council, you would know what the live local requirements are and how we, you know, um, what we need to do to, to, um, I guess to position ourselves to, um, to address any proposals that have to do that.
And there are requirements in the live local act that say, if you do, if you do have to comply with the act, if you do have to, uh, follow it, then you have to interpret how it applies within your city boundaries. You have to prepare and polish and update once in a while. Interpretation, expectations, rules and procedures to implement the administrative approvals. So we don't have a process in place right now. If we've determined that we are bound by the live local act, then we should have those interpretations, rules, expectations, procedures in place. And that's what this policy says, ba- basically.
And right now. And I'm asking, correct me if I'm wrong, because we're close to the airport, it may be that.
It seems that's the interpretation.
We, we do know that there is language in the, um, in the amended act also that says that, um, I don't know if Heidi might remember this exactly, but, um, uh, uh, noise compatibility zones. Well, we do have.
Reduction or noise. They worded it in a way that's confusing, but.
Right. But, but it's something to the effect of noise compatibility and we do have. Right, but, but it's something to the effect of noise compatibility, and we do have two noise, um, two noise curves from the airport that fall, that was part of my, my map. Um, that was gonna show you where we have two of those compatibility zones that, that fall. Um, essentially cover the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street district and a little bit farther in. So at least there, we know that it's possible that, that will protect that area.
Or at least exempted from the vocal.
Potentially, yes. W- we believe it does, but you know.
You're staying. Um, okay. Do you have more questions? No, it's just like, it's so like the, this, this part, it's just, it looks like it was just like quickly put together and I just, I'm used to having more depth. I don't know, this is like the standard type of verbiage for adding on a new objective. I mean, it's just like boom, boom, boom. Like, I know we needed it, I just don't know if that's like the standard, like, what do other cities have in respect to like verbiage when it comes to?
Yeah, actually, this language that is here is very, very close to, except for those last two policies, is very close to language that you find in other comprehensive plans. I know it's very similar to what's in the comprehensive plan of Miami Shores and a couple of others that we looked at, so it's, it's not out of the ordinary.
Yeah, no offense to Miami Shores, but
No, no, I understand. All I'm saying is, believe me, I know everything there is to know about that comprehensive plan. Uh, and what they want them to know what to do, but um, um, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that this is not, we didn't make this, this up. It's very common language in the housing elements of comprehensive plans.
The only thing, um, council, when you get ready to take a vote on this, hopefully this evening, um, on policy one point six.
Seven, six.
Is that a seven?
Which one? Well, there was a correction that we made, I, I think you may have the, you know.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Well, anyways, in the housing element, the
One, seven.
Last policy there, um, I would suggest that it read, evaluate and determine the applicability of the live local act, uh, SB one oh two. Um, I would actually replace that with the statutory section and then as may be amended from time to time. And then just delete the based on subsequently approved amendments SB three twenty eight. And the reason for that is, we try to avoid, um, sometimes that level of specificity, because these types of bills can get changed from legislative session to legislative session. So I don't wanna just be restrictive to these two bills.
That's fair.
So with your permission, we would update that to just reference the statute as may be amended from time to time.
Yeah, as it says here. Says, which preclude, precluded means to prevent, which prevent live local act projects within a quarter mile of either side of an existing or planned airport runway for a distance of ten thousand feet, as well as any applicable other exceptions or restrictions. I don't know exactly what that means.
This is uh, this, this is language that I plucked right out of the, the live local act. Um, so, you know, it actually goes on a little bit longer than that, but this is the language that I, I, I think may be what we need to look at, and so I wanted to cite it verbatim from the act.
And I'd like to add that um, the live local act will likely, possibly get some more tweaking
No doubt.
In this legislative session, um, particularly because the state is pretty intent on passing it and, you know, and making sure, um, that, um, whatever, so just whatever is right now is likely to, um, uh, be amended, have amended or have tweaks to it in the next, in the twenty twenty five legislative session.
The reason why Heidi is suggesting that
We
Change, and I think that, that's, that's unfair.
I think that's a good, okay, so let's do this. There's two things we can do. We can, um, and, and councilwoman, do you have more questions on this to?
No, I'm not, it's just too much. I, a workshop would have been nicer, but
Well, I think sometimes what we gotta remember to do, and I know I try to do it, is, um, you know, when you have a lot of questions on something, is reach out to staff before the meetings and kind of some of the things can be, you know, ironed out before, not always, and there's a lot of things that you wanna bring up because you want us all to hear it, you know, and it's just, it's a, it's a work, you know.
Would like to remind you that this is second reading, as well, so.
So what we can do is, if the rest of the council feels comfortable with taking a vote on this, or if the rest of the council, I guess what I'm asking is, does the rest of the council have questions we haven't gotten to y'all on this that you wanna discuss, or do you want to, uh, you feel comfortable with, um, proceeding with a vote on this? I don't wanna keep anyone from, you know, not voting if you still have more questions, because
I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay. Um, and councilman, okay, so if there's a motion to
Motion to approve C.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
But, okay, now we'll have discussion. Sorry. Okay, no, go ahead. Did you wanna?
Um, so you're gonna be making those amendments in the beginning?
Yes, I think that the motion probably
Yeah, the, the, I was just gonna clarify. Are the ones increasing the five thousand to sixty five hundred in both the single family as well as the multifamily. And then the clarification that I just made, I also understand that there is uh, some numbering that
The numbering is correct in the
Okay, so maybe I'm looking at an old version. So just those two things, and that's incorporated in your motion.
Okay, and I'm wondering if, if we need to add some wording in view that, like I said, the next legislative session will likely um, result in even more tweaking or um, to the live local. Do we need to add any kind of wording to give us some flexibility with our comprehensive plan moving forward? I mean, it's, it's hard to tell what's going to come on the horizon, um, with these, um, at the state level, at the
The state law will still preempt this though, right?
But even at the federal level, do we need to add some other language to our, um,
They will.
To our comprehensive plan that gives us the ability to look at things, you know, further, reevaluate, decide, you know, whether this really fits into us, um, you know.
Perhaps, um, perhaps the change should be that this policy should read more broadly, evaluate and determine the applicability to Miami Springs of the live local act.
Or similar acts, you know, because there may be something at the federal level that, you know, except that sort, you know, county knows.
To the chair. To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
There was, um, the city of Miami just did a pushback and they did, I think it was for Coral Gate residents. They amended the live local act. I don't know what the details, are, are, are you familiar with that?
They passed a resolution.
They passed a res-
That they will pass along to Tallahassee.
Right, I don't, I have to look at what the resolution is, but I don't know if that's something that we should look into for protection, because obviously it's for protection of, uh, they were gonna do a, a building that was much, much higher next to single family housing.
They, they, yeah, I mean, the, the, the city passed a resolution and has been transmitted. It doesn't mean that the preemption is still not in place, it is. Whether the legislature listens and takes it into consideration, that we don't know at this point.
But we can always pass a resolution on our own. It wouldn't impact having the comprehensive plan. I guess what I'm asking is there, is there anything in this comprehensive plan to give us a little more broad of
Think that we can change this policy to be broader and just kind of say, we will evaluate the applicability of this and any future preemptions, something to that effect.
For the record, I would just leave it as evaluate and determine the applicability of the live local act, cite the section uh, in Florida statutes as opposed to the bill number, as may be amended from time to time, period.
Do we need to say live local or something else, because we're, we're only referring to live local act? And there may be something else that comes out with a different name, you know, next legislative session and live local act or, or
I, I think the reality is, is we're always going to evaluate and determine how those apply. I think here we're just being very specific, because this is the one that we know about, I, you know.
I mean, there, there, there are gonna be, there could be instances where a live local project is proposed that may be outside of the area that we interpret is exempt because of the runway. But we will have to interpret whether or not the provisions about having a certain number of contiguous single family homes on two or four sides, like that, that's not something you're putting into the, that's something you're gonna have to interpret as it comes up, right? So like, you're not, you're still gonna have to evaluate and interpret anyways as, as it comes up, so.
But that's what policy one point seven seven is about, which is for us to put in place preemptively, if you will, the way in which, like, put it in writing, how we're going to look at these regulations in order to allow us to interpret.
Right, right, so the broader
Yeah.
Sometimes.
I- in, in policy writing, yes, typically, but I, I hear you, I hear you.
More discussion? Count, uh, Vice Mayor, do you have more discussion?
I'm sorry, the Vice Mayor has signed off.
Oh, he's signed off.
He is not feeling, oops.
Okay, um. What are we at? We're at, um, this is the second reading.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Okay, since I see that there's someone and this is a public hearing, I'm gonna open it up before we take the vote and let um, a member of the public who wants to speak on this speak, because it's a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Neri Owens, one sixty nine Corridin Drive. I've been through many of these. I see it as a blueprint of what you want the city of Miami Springs to look like in ten, twenty, thirty years, forty, maybe when we're not here. And your code, some of the things that have been discussed about the code, I do not remember ever seeing in the code. We started as a bedroom community back in nineteen twenty six or twenty eight, and we have continued through the years. We've added a lot of commercial along Thirty Sixth Street. But I really am afraid that if you drop things to five thousand square feet, your ten thousand square foot lots, say, in the bird section or in Corridin where I am, you're gonna be dividing them up and making duplexes in the future, maybe even going thirty feet, which is what the code right now allows, God knows what you might change it to. But this doesn't clarify the vision for me. What it does is it mercs up and adds all kinds of stuff that could potentially be Miami Springs in the future. I don't think that cutting out words like in the charter should be done. I agree with everything Jackie Bravo said, and I think she truly has the interest of this city in her heart. And so I question if you wanna take this vote or not. And I also wanna offer to you the information that FAA says that if you have a runway, you have to go from the edge of the runway, ten thousand feet, and you cannot go higher than five stories. Maybe they have changed it since I worked at the airport before two thousand, but they've added a second runway. When Thirty Sixth Street was built, there was one runway that was further back and closer to Thirty Sixth Street. In this century, they've added a second runway. So that moves the line even further in your Thirty Sixth Street district. Please be careful with what you're doing with this document. It's critical. It's your vision of our future, and you're in this future too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for the public hearing? Erica, since we had a long discussion on it, can you check and see if, if there's anyone signed up?
Well, no one signed up.
I, I mean, anyone.
Yeah, I don't have anybody.
Moment in case they
Yeah, sure.
All right, we'll close the public hearing again. All right, we have a first and a second motion and any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
No.
I'm sorry, uh, give me one second. Okay, okay.
Is there someone that wanted to speak?
No, she couldn't hear before, but it, that was at the beginning of the meeting, so, but now she's able to, she's just responding right now.
Okay.
Um, um, sorry, Councilwoman Bravo?
No.
Uh, Councilman Vahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, three to one. Thank you. We go on to, um.
You're on to the consent agenda, Mayor.
Yes, yes. Consent agenda, is there, um, does anyone have some items they want to pull for discussion? From the consent agenda? Okay, is there a motion?
I'm sorry.
Motion to approve nine A through I.
Your second? Do you have a second for this consent agenda?
I just have, um, can we pull nine A? Thank you, Mayor.
Do you wanna amend your
Motion to approve nine B through I.
Okay, is there a second?
Second time.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
I just had a quick question on this one.
On, uh, okay, so we'll go to nine A. Right?
Yes, I just wanted, uh, JC, if you can provide clarification of, um, this company, Markham LLP.
Mm-hmm.
This is a new company where
This would be the new company, correct?
For auditing.
Audit for, to do our annual audit.
Okay, so it's not the other CPA?
I'm sorry, it's nine H that you wanted to pull or A?
No, nine A, A. Nine A.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they, this would be the new auditing firm. We went out to bid. There was a committee that was, um, that was put together as required by state statute. We received three bids, um, they were all reviewed, and this was the recommended company, based on their price and experience, because this is a national firm, this big company.
That's why I just, I couldn't, I didn't. So
And, and they have probably audited, I'd say ninety percent of the cities in, in South Florida, Markham, so they're, they're a big company, they're good.
More reasonable than
And their prices were the best.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, is there, um, a motion for nine A?
Motion to approve nine A. Second it.
Second it? Any discussion? I just wanna say that, um, uh, I, I think best practices, uh, recommend that we mix up, that we switch our auditing company from time to time at any city. And we've had, even though the, the prior artist did, you know, a very professional and good job. Um, it happens that this, um, during this period, we got a lower bid from this other company, Markham, and I, and I think that is, um, in keeping with best practices for auditing, so, um, I'm glad we're switching. Um, okay, call the vote, please.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to, uh, new business. Oh, that we're gonna do the, the workshop, we're leaving that for the workshop. Okay, so, let's see now. Everyone, correct me if I'm off, we are going to pause this meeting, our council meeting, right, and resume our LPA meeting.
Yeah, so you, you should do a motion to recess this meeting, and then we'll reopen. Uh, recess this meeting until the conclusion of the LPA meeting, and then we will, at the conclusion of the LPA, and after you've made a motion to recommend for or against provisions, uh, you'll come back to this meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recess this meeting and to continue with the LPA meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second that motion.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vahet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, so Sylvia, come on back, because
I suggest that we get that little table and she can sit down.
Yeah, yes, poor thing.
She's standing, there's almost the whole entire meeting.
Do you wanna, like, this one?
Yeah.
But then, okay.
And maybe give her the speaker.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't see that near.
One day when we get the new city hall, we're going to remember all these little. And also have a, a way to, when we take pictures that we quickly, yes, can sort of go around.
Perfect, thank you so much. I appreciate your intelligence. Should have worn my flats. Um, all right, so, um, I guess we can maybe pick up where we left off, if you all remember. But that was, um, we had just started talking about conditional uses and that's where I'm gonna start again. So I had mentioned that we have a short list of about seven items that is, uh, um, proposed. Not necessarily recommended, but proposed, um, as a list of conditional uses, uh, that could be, um, approvable. In this district, which again, you know, uh, takes, uh, some items that are. Uh, conditional uses in this underlying CBD and then a few others that might be, uh, good uses to have here, but. Um, with certain conditions. And then, um, following that. We, um, have, um, the conditional use procedure, which includes the, um, requirements. Uh, which are pretty extensive and you can see that that's a long section. And the reason is because we wanna be very, very clear as to what is required, what, you know, what criteria you will use. When reviewing these uses, that all of that is very clearly laid out. Uh, and, um, let's see, we have the requirements, we have the criteria. And then we have the, um.
Under.
Procedure.
Yes. Criteria, Sylvia.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to see if we're at, um. Line one six one?
One six one.
Uh, yes. Okay. On there. I'd like to see something with that traffic generation and access for the proposed use shall not adversely impact adjoining properties. Um, but also, um, uh, surrounding roadways.
Okay.
Because it shouldn't just be, you know, adjoining properties and surrounding properties and roadways.
Mayor, what line are you on? I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
What line?
Line, um.
Sixty-one.
One six one.
Sixty-one and sixty-two.
We can do that.
Just to add something sort of, um, uh, traffic generation and access for proposed use shall not adversely impact, we have adjoining properties. Um, comma, and surrounding.
Surrounding roadways.
Roads, properties and roadway, something to.
And property roadways.
And properties and road, surrounding.
Surrounding roadways.
Properties and roadways, not just adjoining.
Got it.
Okay, and then down on, uh, one seventy-two. The word sensitive. What does, I find it just kind of a, an interesting word to use, um, very.
Yeah, it means that, so it means that it will take it into consideration. It's, yeah, um. It may be a little.
Something else as to, um, um, kind of, you know.
Like refer to zoning and planning.
Right, is there another word that would be a little more specific as to, um, taken into account? Or consider?
Will take into consideration.
Take into consideration, yes. Um, okay, and then again, we're talking about architectural in that same line, one seventy, architectural and signage treatment. Something with this whole that refers, um, I don't know exactly where to put it in that, the Architectural Review Board. And any, and, and perhaps even. We should say, and any future boards, because right now we don't have another board, but like we just created the, um, Centennial Committee. Last year, so there is the possibility always of other advisory boards, applicable advisory boards.
Yeah, I would just caution you not to overdo it with the board reviews. Because if you, if your goal is to incentivize development. Going through several boards is costly to a developer and the more that you have to do it, the less. The less attractive the proposition is, you know, it's.
Okay, so let's include the Architectural Review Board.
I can certainly do that, yes.
That's here, that we're using, and I guess we can adjust that if we create another board to kind of merge in with.
I, I will not do that here in this section. I will do it in the.
Wherever, yes.
Which is later on for site plan review.
Okay, and then on this, also going down to one eighty-five, line one eighty-five.
Uh-huh.
Um. Well, I'll read that whole thing. It says, uh, no conditional use with generates hazardous waste or uses hazardous materials should be adopted unless the specific location. Is consistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning code. And if we have both, we're talking about both, right? Um, and does not adversely impact wellfields, aquifer recharge areas or other conservation resources. I would like to include or other, other environmental or conservation resources. Um, I'm thinking like air quality. Something could potentially impact air quality and it's not necessarily, you know, dumping into the wellfield. So I'd like the word environmental.
Okay.
In there. And then at the line right under that, um, one eighty-six and one eighty-seven. And again, I'm saying I'd like this, I'm letting the council know what I would like. I, I'm, you know, this is a discussion, so if anyone has objections to this. Um, the city may affix under one eighty-six, the city may affix other conditions to any approval of a condition, conditional use. In order to protect the public, I would like to include an environmental health, safety and welfare, and again include. Environmental. So perhaps to, uh, protect the public and environmental health, safety and welfare.
Through the chair.
Yes.
And how would we, would measure those implementations? Like, how, how is that?
Well, like air quality is, there's air quality measurements. You take air quality measurements, you know, and, and that's a.
So we'll have them come in periodically to do that.
Not necessarily, but it just, the, all that's is saying is we have the ability to address that, not just saying, well, you've never mentioned. You know, other environmental concerns. All you said is if we were, um, dumping into your wellfields.
So let me give you an example. Um, if you were to, if you were reviewing a conditional use. And you felt like there is a possibility of the degradation of air quality because of.
Emissions.
The, right, the amount of traffic, even though the amount of traffic may be still. Uh, cons, you know, compliance with the, the standards and, and consistent with our level of service, perhaps. But the amount of emissions, you know, you, you feel that does, you could make it a condition that every year. They have to do a report and bring it to the council to show that the emissions are still within an acceptable level.
Who has to do the report?
Uh, the applicant.
They, not themselves, they.
Well, obviously they will have to have somebody, yeah. But you, you couldn't, you couldn't impose a condition on the approval of that use that they would have to periodically do this. Test and bring it to.
And it's not that we would require this.
I'm on board.
Right, it's not.
Would you wanna put that verbiage in here just to?
Just environmental, I think by saying envi, it's understood that, you know, somebody just doesn't go and, you know, this is like companies labs that, that do these kind of things. But by putting environmental, it just kind of, I think, provides a bigger umbrella for protection of things that, you know. Clearly, we don't want them dumping into the stormwater drain, but there's other potential environmental concerns.
And it could be anything else too, you know, because it just basically says.
Way and, and how that would be done is not really important here, because that clearly has to be done by qualified, you know, agency.
Like a building permit or when they apply for a building permit to build something or to do something or business. Would that be part of the qualifications?
Your condition could be subject to that, in other words, you could impose a condition that says. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, or you could say prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Or during.
Or during the lifetime of the building, you, you shall do this. Yeah.
The hazardous or anything that's gonna come environmentally is gonna come already at the operation of the business.
Exactly. So, so that language is broad enough to, uh, to allow for all the, all of those particular situations.
All I'm asking is to include environmental in there, in that umbrella of, you know, of just not public health or. Um, uh, uh, what do we call the wellfield contamination? Okay, um. This other one, we've already talked about the Architectural Review Board being put in somewhere. Um. Okay, going to art in public places, and this is something that I discussed with Heidi and, and JC and, um. And Sylvia last week.
I'm sorry.
The art in public places.
You're, you're in the, um, you're in the FAR bonus system, right?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah.
What's that, my line is in?
Going to.
This is after two ninety.
Ninety, after two ninety. What I think would be beneficial for us to put in here, and we have in here, um. Any, that, there's not really lines to this.
I, I didn't know how to put lines to tables, sorry about that.
Okay. Right, right, okay.
Sorry.
Problem. Um. And let me see how to come to this area, um, under page nine of twenty. Going down three quarters of the way. Um. There's italicized area that says artwork substitution for other reasons. And that's halfway down. Let me show you on my page, maybe.
If, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot. I can put this up on the screen.
Okay.
I totally forgot that I was still online. Let me zoom in.
And if someone has some comments while we're going through these areas or has, you know, we can discuss it while we're all in the same area. Under updated assessment. And then after that, which is in the middle of page, and then there's italicized artwork substitution for other reasons.
I don't know what that means.
You see it?
Yeah, so, um.
The sentence that, that, what I think we should add something in here and, um, is. Halfway down from there, I don't know how to say this, the approved artwork would require excessive maintenance. That we may, um, require substitution of artwork for one of the reasons maybe that the artwork may require. Um, excessive maintenance. I'd like to add on there excessive maintenance to the artwork or surrounding area also. And I'm using from experience, um, with Metro Rail. When Metro Rail was first built, back then art in public places was, and it's kind of evolved over the years. But it was, the, the funds were art outside of the stations. Now it's art in public, uh, places very often includes art as part of the architectural component. But what happened is over the years, um, several of the stations like, um, well, almost all of them. But, um, say the Alapata one, they have these works of art, these sculptures that over time, because they're outdoors. Um, start rusting and start, you know, going bad and become dangerous actually, um, so, um. They can't really be repaired. Because they're pieces of art, so they can only be repaired by the artist or there does, I mean, it becomes, believe it or not, it becomes like a big issue. So what would happen a lot of times, and you would see this, is a ugly fence would go around this artwork. Because that's the only re, way that the city can keep the hazard of, you know, somebody coming in, you know, the oranges, those, uh. Claus Odenberg oranges in front of, um, the government center. If you've, through the years, you've gone to the government center, you've seen how sometimes they're fenced off. Sometimes it's, I mean, it's just varied.
Hmm.
Um, everyone knows I love art and I'm all for it. I just, um, would like to say in that sentence, um, excessive maintenance. To the artwork or surrounding area, if there was some reason that the surrounding area, the artwork itself requires excessive maintenance. That we can anticipate.
This, um, just a question, uh, the, the next, uh, or the next part of that, uh, statement says. The condition or security of the artwork cannot be reasonably guaranteed. Does that cover some of the concern?
Yes, the security or.
The condition or security.
Security. Um, well, that's just of the artwork.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, does that cover some portion of that? And, and could we maybe modify that too?
Security or safety of the, it's hard to imagine unless you've actually witnessed these things and, and each one is so unique. Um.
Mm-hmm. Guaranteed or maintained?
I was just thinking excessive maintenance for surrounding area, if that requires that, you know, where we have that sentence. Approved artwork would require excessive maintenance. To the artwork or surrounding area, and that kind of just generates immediate areas, something like that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then further down, this is like the fourth sentence from the bottom. Um, where we have alternatively, and I'm glad we have this in here, payment in lieu, the city council may at any time. Of site plan approval, agree to accept a contribution in the amount equal to the value of the art. I think that's, that's necessary because, um, and I was, as I was, um. When we were having this discussion last week among us, um, and I'm all for art in public places, but we're giving. Bonus points for art in public places, so we're committing, you know, we're responsible for what that art is in a way, right? That it's something acceptable. And should there be a proposal where the art that's being proposed by the developer just really isn't fitting with the character? Of the city or what we perceive to be the best fit for the majority of residents, because we represent the majority of the residents, that. Um, and we can't agree, you know, we go on and, and you know, they submit something else and we're still not in agreement that they have the option of.
Should we create a public art fund?
Well, that they just have an option of the one percent price that they would do for public art in public places. They can just say, we'll provide that to the city, but, um, so I think that sentence is very good in there. The only thing I wanted to ask is, should it say where the city council may at any time of site plan approval? Should it be at just any time prior to final installation? Agree, should this drag on? I mean, the project shouldn't be held up for that, but just, um, at any time prior to final. Installation of the art project, agree to accept a contribution in the amount equal to the value. And all I'm doing is envisioning, should this just be, you know, sometimes we get into these rabbit holes of, like with the mural and all of, an inordinate amount of time. Um, is spent resolving something that if we had just clarified it initially, it'd be clear.
Yeah, like, um, I'm sorry, Mayor, um. I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding, because then this sentence would read, the city council may, the city council may. At the time, at any time prior to site plan approval, agree to accept a contribution, so.
I wasn't gonna say site plan approval instead of that saying prior to final installation?
At any time prior to final installation.
Should that come up that we're into this, you know, ongoing, ongoing?
Yeah, but my point was more that what you're saying is that. At any time before the artwork is installed, if. If you change, if you change your minds, you would require them to come to you to approve that. Because we do have language, uh, farther up that says that once you remember that. When the site plan comes before you. All they're gonna be required is to have a conceptual design of the art and of the placement, right? And you approve the site plan at that point within those terms. There may be changes because the construction value was not, you know, uh, estimated correctly or, you know, priced in threes, whatever.
To make the project, you know, the artist never wants to do that.
Something happens and, 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 uh, and that is the reason why I had the language about the updated assessment. That you actually at that time, but that gives the city manager the ability to say, okay, now we're in the construction phase. And we know that this is, you know, this estimate that you gave us before is too low. So we will accept an updated, we will require an updated assessment or. You could agree. JC, to a redesign or a substitution, but what you're saying in that other, uh, s- sentence below is that. When those substitutions happen, the applicant will have to come to the council to get the substitution approved. I just wanna make sure that I.
Not necessarily, I'm, I'm more envisioning, should we get into this, you know, like. It just keeps on and on and what they've substituted still isn't acceptable. It doesn't meet the appraisal value. It doesn't meet that whatever that. We're past the site plan approval. But at that point, we can still, the council can still say, you know what, we'll accept, just to close this out, a a payment in lieu.
To the chair. It would be possible just to get with a site plan, a rendering of the art, and at that time, we can decide whether it's good or suffices.
You can, certainly, but
What's the best step?
Yeah.
In that?
My my experience, and I think that Heidi will attest to this as well, is that at the time of site plan approval, probably one of the last things that your developer is thinking of
Right.
is what piece of art they're gonna buy. And that's the reason why I just had that language about being conceptual, like this is the type of more more or less like this, rather than the actual piece, which would happen later, right? And and you're right, that at that point, it could be, it could be the council that still negotiates that, but the language that I had farther up, kind of gave the manager that ability to negotiate that substitution or redesign on your behalf, because you have given the direction. This is what we envision. So.
Yes, and so so my point is this, should there, and again, I'm hoping this doesn't matter, but given that sometimes we wind up spending a great deal of time on something that if we have some clarification, it could be easily taken care of. And I can see this as potentially being one of those, knowing the experiences that have occurred with art in public places and other places. And and for the most part, they're lovely, they're gorgeous, and that doesn't happen. But for the percentage where these issues come up, one is the appraisal price is not you know, the appraiser, you know, my cousin made this art, and I say it's worth three million dollars, but in reality, you know, that's not a realistic appraisal. So in those cases, that's relatively easy, except that we need some other artwork, right? So again, that has to be approved. The other thing is the artist may say, yes, I'm going to do it, and then they have a disagreement with the developer and not. And we've agreed to that, but that's no longer the art. So there's a whole bunch of possibilities. Or the other one, which is probably what, you know, could occur, is the artwork itself is just something that we don't feel is in keeping with the character of our city. And again, we're the ones agreeing to give them an enhancement for art in public places. So it's not just a developer who wants to put art in their building, it's art that we've agreed to to give an enhancement point or whatever we call it for. So just to give us a little ability at different areas along the line, should this occur, that it doesn't become a big deal, that it's basically just the developer can say, look, we can't agree on this, let me just, you know, if he wants to, you know, I'll pay you for the the percentage, you know, of the amount that the artwork was supposed to be. That we have that ability throughout the phase, because like you said, the artwork is going to be the last thought. That's not going to be something that is you know, planned, or even if it is planned, you know, a lot can change in the years.
A lot can change between your approval and the time of construction. That is very true. But I, yeah, I'm sorry.
I I think that how it's drafted contemplates that, and maybe we can move the payment and loose section up. Um, I'm just trying to think, because right now, if you go up in that, on that same page, under the updated assessment section and artwork substitution, that's basically, I think, Mayor, where where you're at, right? Like, we've we've gone to a hearing on site plan, it's been approved, but it's been conceptual. And two years down the road, when we're getting ready to install it, whether it's a sculpture, or it's something that, as you mentioned, like integrated into the construction, like a terrazzo floor or lighting that counts as art, it's just not gonna work out as it was conceptualized two years prior. So I think what Sylvia is trying to get clarity on is this already provides, and it gives a series of reasons that the city manager would be able to work with the developer to modify what that art is going to be because of a variety of reasons.
Yes. So my my only question, Heidi, then is actually in the very last sentence, is just saying where it gives us the ability to accept a contribution in the amount of that, where it says, at the time of site plan approval, should we expand upon that to say you know, anywhere before the artwork is installed? That we have the city council has the ability to accept a contribution, and that way
Three months before exactly what they're gonna put, like, you wanna see, because they should know what they're gonna put within three months.
Just, right, not just that the site plan, you know, that anywhere along the way, if that's it, let's just, you know, when they say, okay, we'll just pay you for it, that we have that ability, because here it's saying site plan, which is a very early phase.
So, and I I understand what you're going with, so maybe we just need to provide that authorization.
At any time prior to final installation, or some wording like that.
So I think we're dealing with, Sylvia and I, I think, are thinking of two different things. You have a hearing as the developer, the developer's coming before you at the time of site plan, presenting, going through a whole public hearing process. So the question that Sylvia and I have is, do you now at two years later, after site plan approval, three years, four years, however long it takes, do you want that developer to have to come back to say, city council, we haven't been able to do this, will you accept a contribution in lieu of installation?
Yes.
Or do you want that process to be able to be done administratively through your city manager? So that's that's the question. And so if if the answer is allow your city manager to do it, then I think we would just slightly update the the process here on the updated assessment, which already contemplates at the time of building permit review. Uh, the man, the manager may already agree to a redesign or substitution that meets the cost requirement. We could add the city manager may agree to receipt a contribution in an amount equal to, we could basically take that payment in lieu language and put it
Give it to the city manager.
Correct.
Okay.
So at site plan time, you would be making that decision, whether you're accepting the art or accepting a payment in lieu. But if two years down the road,
It's not possible.
Working out. I I, if you want to bring the developer back, you certainly can. But I suspect that at that point, they've already gone through building design, construction, drawings, permitting, and so
No, I I think, unless the council has other thoughts on this, allowing the city manager to receive the contribution in lieu and not dragging it out is fine, you know, just that that would be fine.
Yeah.
It just anywhere along the the, I would just want to make sure that that we can do that anywhere along the the path.
I think I I got that part.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can make it a condition.
Okay. You'll help me with
Right, we have a long list of projects, so.
And and I don't know if we need to put wording in there of, you know, that the, it needs to be within the character, the artwork. I can't remember if I wrote myself notes on that, but it's in there that the artwork, you know, has to be within the character of the city or something.
In 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 into how other cities do that, but the vast majority of the language that talked about sort of context and that kind of thing was related to an actual public art program administered by the city with a committee and, you know, accepting or rejecting. What we're talking about here is something a little different, which I think we need a little more time to look into because of First Amendment issues and that kind of thing. So, uh, but we'll
Just that, you know, the character. And again, it's because we're giving them enhancements based on they're submitting something. And then that that's the sentence under Let's see, on this page ten of twenty, we remove something and in this case, I think it should be included. We moved the last line under it's C now, it used to be B, the line's been scratched out, and now it's C. Gateway District Feature. And so this last sentence, it says, the proposed features shall be submitted as part of the site plan review application package subject to approval by the city. I'm not sure why we removed that.
Well, the reason for the removal of that specific part of that sentence is kind of the same reason why the charter language was removed from that policy in the company, because
It's clear that it has to be approved by us.
It's sort of redundant, because when you submit your site plan review application, it has to go
Okay.
Through you. So if you don't approve it, it doesn't go anywhere. I mean, it doesn't hurt, but it really doesn't add anything, that language in there.
Okay, because you're saying in other places, we already have that the site plan, that that's part of the site plan, the remove
The site plan.
The art in public places is a little, to me, is a little bit different than, because it's so subjective in interpretation, you know, it's not like
I understand.
So I, let's include that in there, because we're talking about something that's not, you know, this many feet high and this many, you know, it's very clear what the requirements are, we're talking about art.
Wait a second, that's not talking about art. Let me make clear, C is actually a district gateway feature that is architectural.
Yes, yes, architectural, that that too could be, and you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That 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 too is architectural, like, and this has come up in the past when we were requiring, you know, Pueblo Mission style, you know, encouraging Pueblo Mission style, except we haven't really defined what Pueblo Mission style is. So we're telling them to do this architectural feature that has that, and they're going, look, you really don't have that design of what it is. We're saying this is Pueblo Mission style that we have. So I think, again, there, that would be good to leave it in there, because it's something that's so up to interpretation.
But not here.
I think that
Under review.
The subject to approval by the city language. So for all of these, in order to get these, they can't be administratively approved.
None, none of them can.
These, any of these bonuses.
City council is the only one that can approve the granting of F A R bonuses for applications that come in before you offering these in exchange for that F A R. So the only way that that can happen is subject to approval by the city.
Okay.
What is it? So that's that's what I meant by, it doesn't really add much to say that.
Still have to approve it anyway.
You have to approve, you have, to approve the project with F A R, you have to go through the review and approval of these.
And that's on line four ten, four fourteen, on page sixteen. And and this is where Sylvia was talking about adding the review by the Architectural Review Board. If you go to four ten, as part of the process, it's delineated all of the steps that have to happen. So if you need any variances, you're gonna go to the zoning and planning board or board of adjustment. Uh, if you're gonna, you know, you have to go to your zoning and planning board, you have to go to the city council for approval.
Okay.
These, these are all the steps that you need to do. And so there's no way that you could get any of these bonuses without
Nobody's gonna sneak by you.
Okay, sounds good. Under D, green buildings?
Yes.
On page twelve of twenty. Okay, I would like, under the first bullet, which is, the applicant must successfully register the project with the U S Green Building Council, that's LEED, or the Florida Green Building Coalition, or other verified third-party certifying agency. And then we scratched out as approved by the city planner. I would like to keep that in, but make it as approved by the city manager or his designate. Because as we talked, there are a lot of certifying agencies out there, and some of them, you know, as long as you pay the big bucks and more and more are kind of on there. So these are recognized ones, the U S Green Building Council, Florida Green Building Coalition. And there's another one, but, you know, just but we we approve the certifying agency. It's not them saying we've got it certified by, you know.
Right.
And then under D of that, well, the last bullet, which is a very long paragraph on that page. The last bullet item, in the center of that page, I'm trying to figure out how to tell you, there's a sentence in the center of that page, let's see. But there's a letter, a word that ends city, and then the letter of credit or S grow. The next sentence after that is if the project fails to meet the criteria required for certification, talking green building certification, by the, instead of of having in there, I know we scratched out the green building certification, because that only applied to LEED. I'd like that sentence to read, if the project fails to meet the criteria required for certification by the city-approved certifying agency with within one year. So what we had before was just the certification by the certifying agency.
Right.
And I'd like to just clarify by the city-approved certifying agency.
Got it.
What, I'm sorry, to the chair, why was that even scratched out if we're talking about green buildings?
Because that's only one
It's only one.
Organization, well, this U S by the Green Building Certification Institute, right, but but I want to clarify that we have to approve the other net recognized
Okay.
Agencies. It's not just this agency will do the certification for them.
And and there are some state programs that are fully accredited and 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 that will meet the requirements.
And the cost.
You may not, you may not call them nationally recognized necessarily, but they're recognized in the state, so.
So I just want sort of that we have the authority, you know, the ability to say, yes, this is a reputable firm, they're doing the green building certification, it's fine, it doesn't have to be LEED, but you know, it, for the most part, they all meet this, as long as they're certified third-party verification of, you know, they're saying they're doing this, that they verify that they're doing it for the developer, and then we know that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, under two ninety-four, two ninety-five, that line all the way to three oh one. Why, why are we and I'm just asking again, significantly reducing the permit fees up to like fifty percent? That seems like a lot of reduction in permit fees when our staff, time.
It's it's not fifty percent, it's zero point five.
Oh, thank you. I had looked at it as, okay, yes.
No, 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 no.
I thought, you know, I glanced and I'm going fifty percent, you gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, no, um, okay, I, this, this, this item, I I had a long conversation with Ulises about it, and he kind of helped me structure the the sort of the the tiers modeled after a this, a tier discount that is already given by the city on permits for certain, you know, certain things.
No, that's fine.
Based on, based on value. So instead of doing it based on value, here, for the purposes of encouraging land assembly, we're doing it uh, based on square footage.
Okay.
Or a grid, if you will.
So it's never even one percent, at the most, it's half of one percent.
Yes.
Okay, I must have looked at that without my glasses on. And I circled it.
I think here, two things to note. One, this is just a reduction of the city's building permit side. Um, when we collect city, when we collect building permit fees, uh, there's an a portion of it that goes to the state, the county, everybody sort of gets their hand in the pot. So we're not able to reduce other agencies' fees. Um, so we've tried to make that clear here. And then I think where we could use your feedback is uh, you'll see on line two ninety-four and two ninety-nine, it has in brackets, alternative A versus alternative B. Um, one is alternative A on two ninety-four is a permit fee reduction. On line two ninety-nine, it's a permit fee rebate. So the idea being, of course, that a reduction is upfront, whereas a rebate, we collect everything upfront, and then at the end, we rebate and send it back to you. Um, so that's where we could use your your feedback on
Right.
What do you prefer?
J C, what do you prefer on that? What do you feel is more manageable with that? I hate to do a rebate and have to give back.
No, a rebate, a rebate requires more work as far as our accounting. Um, I'd rather just give them
A reduction upfront.
The reduction upfront, it's
Gonna think with Chris.
It affects us, our bottom line, doesn't affect us anything, except the workload on on finance staff and keeping track of it. So it could be something could fall through the cracks.
Okay.
Should we leave both in and have the option for both, or just?
It it's up to you. I, the way that I'm presenting them here is for you to make a choice between It, it's up to you, I, the way that I'm presenting them here is for you to make a choice between both. Um, either or, uh, because I have, I have some additional incentives, so I, I don't think that we need to expand the universe of incentives that much necessarily. And, um, and as J C said, it's, it's more paperwork for the, you know, the rebate to be made, and so if you choose, if in other words, I think that if we leave them both and people choose one versus the other, and then the next one chooses the first one instead of the second, you know, it's gonna start getting very complicated, you know.
To the chair, what, i- in your, um, experience, what is the best practice that other larger cities are using?
Well, um, I, I don't recall, um, an incentive like this for land assembly. So we're threading into sort of a little bit of new territory, but, uh, in terms of like the, 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 um, the permit fee reduction or rebate, I think I see more the reduction than the rebate. It probably precisely because of the paperwork.
You have to start itemizing and separating and to pay back, or you get a little accounting messy.
What do you think is better, you're saying the?
I would say the.
I mean, the deduction.
Okay.
It's, that's cleaner for the books.
Yeah, okay. Just so, to, to make sure.
Or should we leave it in there that at the city's discretion, that we have the ability to institute, should it become, you know, should down the road? I, I mean, I don't anticipate this gonna happening a lot, but that it becomes the refunding, the reduction is very.
Well, true, true, true.
But that the refunding, oh, sorry, the reduction is getting very cumbersome, and it might just be better to say pay everything upfront, then we'll decide on a rebate, that we have the ability at the cities, leave them both in and say, the city shall determine whether.
It's up to you, I know, and the city, the city does provide these discounts for building permit already. Uh, based on, uh, construction value. So there, the building department is used to doing it, they know how to do it, they have systems in place to keep track of that, so I suspect that this will be just sort of adding on to that, uh, system. For, um, for only those projects that come in, that do qualify, you know, because they're assembling land.
Okay, all right, so let's just leave it. At, at the refund.
Question about.
Reduction, I'm sorry.
Fee deferral just buys them time to, to solidify their.
Their financing.
Financing, and they're not getting impact fees waived, they're just.
No, no, this is not a waiver, this is just a deferral, yes, and this is, you know, obviously subject to you all adopting impact fees.
And should there be on there with impact fee deferral a time period? Of certain, you know, we're deferring it for, it's not forever. Um, should it be a referral of a year with possible extension, because that seems like we're leaving it kind of open-ended of yeah, yeah, I'll pay the impact fees, but.
Well, how long do they have to, to acquire permanent financing? Cause it says that that's what it buys them.
That depends on the proposal.
It can be years to get the financing, like years and years, and, and oftentimes, you'll have a site plan that gets approved uh, in this year, and it won't get built for another eight, ten, twelve years.
On how big the project is.
Right, so, um, I, I think that this is something that I would leave for negotiation. And approval at time of site plan, whether it's through a site plan condition or something to be included in the development agreement.
So we can put something.
Okay, um, then under line, we're back to lines now, that's good, three sixty-nine and three seventy. Where we have provision of bicycle parking and distance and inclusion of bus and trolley um, stops. I think we should consider removing those, I really don't see in our city giving significant, not that, I mean, bicycle parking is going to be there anyway, the trolleys, the bus stops. Right now, we don't even have bus service in Miami Springs, the county's pulled it away, so I can see him putting it in and saying it's temporary, but then it doesn't really exist, so I don't see a great deal of benefit to including both of those for our situation. You know, the other things are important, the availability of onsite parking, the availability of off-street parking, um, the distance to public parking. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
I mean, where would the bicycle parking go on the sidewalks?
Uh, no, this, um, this is not necessarily requiring bicycle parking, but this is part, these are th- this is the list of factors that a, an applicant will have to take into consideration in any study that is presented to the city to justify.
Your parking spaces.
Exactly.
So he could say that there is a bus stop right over here, that way I don't need the parking spaces, or there is a bicycle rack over here, so, so that's why I'm for just removing those, as the other things are, I think, are important of justifying reduced parking, but I think in our specific city, um, they don't merit consideration in the traffic.
I didn't touch that list because I didn't know.
No, no, I know, it was something that we had before, and I think, um, it shouldn't be there.
Okay.
If that's okay with the council to strike both of those.
Yes.
Yes.
They shouldn't benefit from what's already there.
Well, or, or get reduced parking spaces, number of parking spaces, because there's a bike rack nearby, you know, of. Uh, pay for a part, oh, this is, um, on three eighty-three and three, well, three eighty-four is just a typo, just needs to say it may be required to post signage directing patrons to.
Location of parking.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
But then, um, I'm wondering, um. They may be required to post signage, we're telling them they may be required to post signage directing patrons, saying there's public parking over here. Should we include in there that they may be um, required to pay for a part of the signage, signage gets kind of expensive, or the cost of enforcement? This might be going, because enforcement is, if we're going to, in these areas, I know we're talking about these meters, you know, and, um, these, uh, automated systems and staffing to go around and see if you're not supposed to park there after hours, or, you know, overnight parking, and they have it there, um. And these are spaces that, public spaces that they're using, but that are part of, you know, that property being allowed to be built there. Should we require them to pay for?
Like the shared parking.
Well, for part of the enforcement that we're talking about of, you know, we're going to be actually saying, if you, if you can't, if you can only park there two hours. You know, there's going to be a cost of enforcing that, right, so, um. And, and this might be more complicated than we can really do here, but I'm just saying that we may be able, adding that sentence in there that we may require.
Can I take us back to three seventy-eight, so three seventy-eight mentions, uh, so two things, three seventy-seven says that, uh, it, aim in lieu of parking is an amount that's set from time to time, but we already, we already established the parking, the parking.
You have, but you, you could adjust it.
Right, okay, so as long as it, it's referred to somewhere else, but says the funds should only be used to, to fund multimodal mobility, what is that? I thought, I thought we were able to use those funds for parking infrastructure.
Yes.
Wide lighting.
Yeah.
That's considered multimodal mobility? Okay.
And, uh, this is kind of a side, a side comment entirely, but maybe something for the future. I kind of think that your parking, uh, in, in lieu of fees are reversed. Because you have, if I recall correctly, um, a structure that says between one and twenty-five spaces or something like that is uh, forty thou, no, thirty thousand dollars, and then if you have twenty-five or more, you pay forty thousand dollars per space. I think it's, should be the other way around, like the more spaces you are doing, the less you pay per space, but I don't know, that's that's the first thing that occurred to me when I saw that. Um, anyway, that's the conversation for another day, just, I'm just starting to lose it a little bit.
I know what you're saying, but I look at it the other way, because land is worth more, right, so you're gonna be occupying more. The, for me, I'm looking at the benefit of the city.
I hear you.
Um, I know you're coming out with that, but I look at real estate value, and that's, it's, it's valuable, right, and we don't have a lot of it, so.
That's, that's, that's absolutely a fair.
I don't think anybody's probably even gonna, maybe gets up, like, maybe, maybe one person, but if they get to that point.
There, there were, there was, there were a couple of, that, it, it came up in my head because of a calculation that I did not very long ago, but I don't think that's going anywhere.
And then when we discuss these things, they don't come, especially if they're business owners or they have existing properties, they may want to do something with, and we're having these discussions over and over, and they don't come forward, it's kind of surprising to me that, when they're gonna do something.
Uh, you know, they do the calculation, they have to pay half a million dollars into the city fund to have their parking, I think that that puts them off a little bit, you know, um. No, exactly. Uh, all right. Any other questions?
Well, so on that, uh, three eighty-three, three eighty-four. Should we put something in there saying that, um, the city may, not saying we will, but that we may, um, also in addition to requiring them to post signage directing patrons to the parking, um, require them to pay for a part of the signage or, uh, the signage at the parking. You know, the public parking that they're using, or for the cost of enforcement of parking. J C, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, mayor, my, my computer just shut down. Um, as far as the cost of enforcement, I, I mean, are we talking about one-time payment, because the cost of enforcement is gonna continue.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, eh, so I don't really know what you mean by that.
Right, okay, no, that's a good point, it's true, it's not, uh.
And, and I think that the forty thousand or whatever the fee is, is intended to cover that.
Yeah.
Whether it's acquiring land to build a parking garage, and, and the grandiose sense of, of what you're using the funds for, or something as simple as just posting a sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can it cover the enforcement?
It could cover the enforcement, obviously, you know, the amounts that are deposited in this fund are, are finite, you know, so they may not last forever to cover enforcement, but, you know.
So multimodal mobility improvements can cover
Can, yes.
Readers that we're using for chalking to, that are part of enforcement.
Right, and that's why we brought in the language to say multimodal improvements, rather than saying just parking.
Good.
Now, what I, and I don't want to complicate things, what I've seen, if I'm not mistaken, I've seen other cities do is they'll ask, or as, as a reward, or, or as an incentive, they pay for like an extra freebie car. They, they, you know, they, they do something like that, um, they contribute towards, towards that to offset.
It, it could be used that way too, yes.
Are you saying to include it as part of this in here, or that it's already in the parking fee?
I'm saying that it is.
Already in there.
Yeah, because that trans, multimodal transportation improvements is very broad.
Yes.
It could be anywhere from broadening your sidewalks to, uh, providing shades, so that it's, you know, easier for people to walk, or to signage, to crosswalks, to, uh, bicycle racks, to, you know.
I, I was just making the council aware that there's other possibilities that, you know, that we can use.
So I guess that even in the negotiations, we can always encourage them to use, you know, to contribute toward freebie, you want these parking spaces and, you know, um, pay for, for a service like freebie.
It could be part of the.
For, you know, the next two years or three years or something.
Yep.
Okay, um. So that's already there, such conditions. Um, actually, I think that's all the comments, I thought I had a comment, and I see one back there, and I feel like I had a comment that had to do with an approval of by the Public Works, but I'm, I can't find it where I. You saw it, something to do, where was that, I, I thought I had circled it, but I don't seem to see it.
Um, three thirteen. That has to do with the impact fee defer.
Oh, yes, fee deferrals may only be approved if the director of public works determines that the funding is not needed to complete. And I think I had just put that, okay, what I had put on there is the note about the deferral time period should we specify, but from what you're saying, doesn't make much sense to try to specify that, you can do that during the negotiations, right?
And, and I think as Heidi said, it's something that could be part of the negotiated development agreement, could be made a condition. Uh, and there, at that time, the two parties together can agree on what the timeframe is.
Okay. Those were my suggestions for changes to this document. And if anyone else has anything they want to discuss.
Uh, line item four twenty-seven, we added in this number nine.
Give me a second, let me go there.
Okay, I, I, sorry, four twenty-four. Um, development orders for approved site plans for which construction has not been initiated shall expire two years from the date of final approval unless otherwise extended. That's a good thing, we didn't have that. Okay, the next one was, um, development agreement for projects involving FAR bonuses. A standard development agreement between the city and the owner of the subject property prepared pursuant to a term subsection one five zero zero seven zero point one G shall be presented to and approved by the city council as supported as support documentation for the project approval application, give me, give me an example of one that can occur.
Of when?
Like, or, or an example of, uh, an instance where.
Um, so, um, in other communities where we typically deal with development agreements, um, during the period in, in which, uh, we are, uh, reviewing the project at site plan approval, in other words, uh, planning and zoning and all the other, um, disciplines are reviewing. We're also working with your attorney to, uh, draft the agreement and negotiate the terms you know, with, with the city manager, um, working with the applicant. So the, all of that is happening sort of upfront, by the time we get to council with the project for cycle and approval, that there, you know, typically there will be a draft development agreement that we'll put in front of you, will get discussed. The terms can be, you know, further refined, and then, um, if you approve, um, the project and are okay with the development agreement, it can come back later in final form for your final, um, approval of the, of the agreement.
One, one caveat on that, our preference is to have the development agreement fully negotiated prior to site plan or con, in conjunction with the site plan approval, um. It, it helps get it done ahead of time, um, for the cities, from the city's perspective. So while we've been able to, in, in other situations, um, authorize the manager to make whether there are substantial or non-substantial changes to the development agreement, I think the overall preference is to bring you a document that is in, in near final form so that it's something that you are approving, you are okay with, you've agreed to the negotiated terms, and, and it's sort of you sign on the dotted line the next day.
Yeah, I think to add to what Heidi's saying, um, and, and I've seen this happen, what you try to avoid is having the agreement be negotiated on the dice.
Yes, very much so.
And she was being too polite to say that.
So FAR bonus would be an example of what, remind me again.
An F A R bonus would be for, well, it could be a combination of things, right, right, let's say that somebody says, well, you know what? Um, I would like to get up to three point zero F A R in order to make the project my, my vision, right, uh, in order to do that, I am going to, uh, I'm going to certify the building green. That gives me point five, and then I'm also going to do my native landscaping. And then I'm also going to do my native landscaping and I'm going to uh, provide some excess parking that gives me, you know, a fraction and another fraction and and, you know, accumulates a whole bunch of these different points, if you will. So that is the F A R bonus. It could be one or it could be a combination. Some some of the projects that you have already seen have come in with fractions of F A R, not necessarily going all the way up to, you know, a a a full point.
What's our max now on the gateway?
Uh, for for the gateway, um, it's two uh, for no, currently is one point seven. We're we're going up to two. We're going up to two.
Was there a reason to go up to two?
Well, uh, one point seven is not, it doesn't fully fulfill the potential of many of these properties, especially if we're encouraging um, land assembly.
What?
Land assembly, assembly of of property. So I just didn't feel that, like when I did the calculations on some of these sites, especially some of the smaller ones too. It just doesn't give you enough to do anything that is, you know, significant as far as so the.
I get you. So what was the far on the town center? Was that?
What was that?
Yeah.
It's not one point. It was a he they could have gone up to one point seven, but they didn't. I think it's one point five maybe.
Yeah, they did. They did not go up to, no, they did not go up to the maximum. So, yeah, but um, it it I think it it really gives you a little bit of flexibility. Uh, gives you the flexibility and also gives the developers flexibility, because if you're trying to incentivize some of these properties to be developed, then, you know, at 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 a lower sort of maximization is is not sufficiently attractive.
No, what I'm saying is at one point five, I I don't even think they got to one point five. That's a really big.
That project did not.
Project, right? So I'm saying, do does that area need more than that? Uh, I don't see anything being bigger than that per se.
No, um, not right now, but I think that the smaller properties are the ones who need a little more, actually.
Also, it was bigger.
Like the the property, the um.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Talk about the real estate, the size of it. It's gonna be depending on the case.
It it will depend. Yes.
Mayor, so this section here, it but basically saying is like, for example, in in the, no, but in the in the in the town center, um, they didn't have a uh, a developer's agreement. So when you had to look to see what they were gonna do for the F A R, you had to go back to the memo that was originally written and then it it was difficult to follow along. Here, everything is gonna be put into an agreement. It's gonna be signed and executed, and that's what we hold them to. So that's what we follow.
And any project that wishes to use the F A R bonus system would have to enter into a development.
I saw him five thirty-seven, right? Any other questions for Sylvia or J C? On this? Okay, um, let's see. Do we haven't taken a vote on this?
No, we're still in the L P A, so.
That's right.
Well, and and actually, the L P A, though, we have to take a vote to approve it to.
You should make a a motion to recommend to the city council. I'm going to assume the motion is going to be
To approve all these things.
To include. I I'm gonna attempt to make the motion. Uh, I I think you're inviting a motion to adopt uh, to recommend approval of the ordinance with the changes discussed at this evening's meeting.
Yes, I'm inviting that. Is there anyone that wants to make that motion with the changes discussed at the meeting?
So I have, um, so I I've got, I've got a I'm looking at this differently. I I appreciate the the areas in in this ordinance cleanup where we're strengthening the ordinance with regard to like uh, evaluating and addressing like the parking needs and also streamlining and and clarifying the 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 uh, like the development agreement, the whole process for site plan uh, approval and 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 review. Uh, and also, you know, the the things about the the architectural changing that, I welcome that. I just, I feel like because of the way things have gone in in uh, in this district, I feel like the aspects of it that are that are really promoting property assemblage, I I have concerns about it because I feel like I I want to take a little bit more of a wait and see approach. I I don't think that we've seen enough of what's, I think that the overlay district uh, promoted development, I I I see a lot of little businesses uh, cropping up. Unfortunately, the town center isn't isn't uh, is is still, you know, has a lot of vacancies. And I I feel like we should take a wait and see approach uh, in terms of like uh, extending the uh, the over, you know, expanding the overlay district. Uh, and even the additional incentives that that we're adding for uh, for land assemblage. I think that I think that that can wait and uh, and that we have time for that, but I I would favor keeping some of these things to kind of refine the ordinance without doubling down on on trying to get developers to to assemble uh, properties and and kind of go big. I'd I would rather see, just my opinion, uh, how things go with what we what we've got. I don't think that we've gotten, I don't think we've gotten a good sense of of what this is gonna look like. At the end of the day, the the goal was to create an atmosphere for that was pedestrian friendly, that people, you know, would live there, shop there, go to restaurants. I still feel like we're a ways from seeing how that's gonna work with what we currently have. And I I feel like if uh, like in terms of like the expansion of the that that A T and T property, I feel like if a developer, you know, down the line wants to do this, they could come to us for for uh, to propose an amendment to to the zoning in that district. I I feel like continuing to encourage property assemblage, that I'm not, I'm not feeling that right now. I feel like we should kind of wait and see. The other aspects of it, I'm uh, I'm okay with. Um, but that that's just one particular aspect of this that I think that I would favor kind of pumping the brakes on it a little bit. I know that there's a lot that that's in here with respect to that, but again, that's just my opinion.
Through the chair. So you're concerned with the FAR? Because that's what's really, that that's what would really create more um, intensification of the area. So I think what you're saying is that you're okay with um, the FAR ratios that we have now and then incorporate all these other elements that actually create more of a structured approach and um, congruency for the vision of this area. So it doesn't be, it's not subjective, because right now I think it's very like wishy-washy. But I think what what we're trying to do is not impact the area more than what it is. So that's why I was referring back um, to to the 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 floor ratio. If we want to keep it at the one seven. Right? Because that's what really makes the impact when you're trying to expand that ratio to to allow for bigger businesses or I I may be understanding it correctly, but that's the concern.
Because I I I think I'm hearing two different things. You're talking about the um, over the um, overall F A R cap. And I think what you are talking about is just the incentives for land assembly.
Correct.
And there's several, and I'm kind of wondering if you're talking about all of them.
Well, the additional ones, right?
But they're they're all addition. There were no ones, there were no um, incentives for land assembly in this ordinance before.
I I think uh, Councilman Fahad, you, I think you would recommend approval of the ordinance except for subsection F. Which are the incentives on land assemblage, which would provide for the permit fee reductions, the impact fee deferral.
What line are you on?
There's also an F under the F A R, the um, just above.
Right, so you could get the, so that's a good point, Sylvia. I think you were trying to, what I understood from your comments, uh, Councilman, is that you don't necessarily think that the city needs to provide the incentive and sort of let the market do what the market's gonna do. Just because we don't provide the incentive doesn't mean that if a developer wants to come in and buy up properties, they can certainly do that and they can either replat or do a covenant, you know, title or, you know. Right, and they can certainly assemble it. You're saying, I think, let the market, let let it, let it happen organically. We don't need to provide pers- at right now, it doesn't seem like we need to provide this. If a developer wants to come in in the future and propose basically this or something similar, they could do so. And I I think we've talked um, individually with each of you. I forget who we've had this part of the conversation with, but um, certainly uh, developers, property owners, people are able to come in and propose ordinances to the city. So if they wanted to ask the city to do this or something similar, they could.
Correct, but I don't think that we need to add additional incentive to it. And I also feel like expanding the overlay district to include the city block between Dakota and Market Street is just going to be in a way incentivizing, you know, large-scale development since that's one big property that has one giant, it's a one-city block. And I feel like we need to see what we've got. I mean, unfortunately, the town center project got delayed because of COVID and other reasons. And and I think that a lot of people have concerns about what is uh, what it's going to mean for our downtown, our central business district, once that project, once they have, you know, a lot of things, how it's gonna affect parking, how it's gonna affect like that, that is, there is going to be increased uh, density and traffic and parking uh, issues and increased things that are the price of doing business, right? You want to encourage certain types of development, and so that comes at certain consequences. But I feel like we should, again, take a wait-and-see approach. I don't feel like we need to, we could always come back later if we see that this is working great and we could always incentivize more and expand the overlay district and incentivize more people coming in. But I feel like it's taken a while for us to kind of see what I, you know, some some would argue that there there's some good things. I I see a lot of storefronts. I see uh, you know, you see development, but uh, there's a big project there that still has empty storefronts in the bottom because those are gonna take longer. Uh, those restaurant and retail retail spaces, I think that also they're uh, they're lagging behind a little bit in uh, in getting it fully, you know, uh, filled in terms of residents in that area. And I think that that's gonna be a big, that's gonna be a big indicator. Like, once that, once those fifty units have residents, we're gonna get a good sense of how everything is gonna work in this district. And I feel like expanding it at this point and and adding in- incentives for people to buy properties and assemble them and do bigger projects. Uh, I think that we can wait on that.
Okay, so you would leave the boundary as is?
Leave the boundary as is and remove the incentives for property assemblage.
To Sylvia's question, on the F A R bonuses, there's the provision, aside from the incentive for land assembly, there's the provision that if you do assemble land, you could increase your F A R. Would you eliminate that as well?
I would.
That would be, that would be an incentive for property assemblage.
You wouldn't eliminate it?
I would eliminate it.
Since it's sort of separate.
But right, because it's not about a reduction or deferral of fees. It's about an increase in floor ratio because you're assembling properties.
So you would eliminate that.
Yeah, I I.
Just for the record, I kind of disagree with you on this. Um, and 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 obviously, I don't make the decision. This is just, you know, my my recommendation because Isn't that beautiful? Um, only in the sense that, you know, I I've been kind of meeting with property owners here within that district for a year now, you know, on different occasions. And I just don't think that they have enough incentive to come and do the small projects as it is. It's just not enough to push them over the edge. It would be, and and again, this is just the reason why this is here is because of, you know, that experience and 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 kind of not just what I've seen here, but you know, in other communities that the more efficient redevelopment strategy is to have larger sites. Not this, not sort of little fragmented, tiny little building. I mean, many of the um, of the properties in this district are even less than ten thousand square feet on an eight thousand square foot lot. A developer is not gonna come and buy that and redevelop it. And you're right, it's it's true that, you know, a developer can come and buy, you know, the lots, but um, assembling land is not easy when you have fragmented ownership. And so there's something to be said for giving you a little like, okay, yeah, it's hard, but if if you do it, you can get this. That's that's all.
And I agree, right? The the variable, though, that stands out to me is time. I feel like we have time to do it because I I feel that there are also unknowns about how the the this was an I, an idea that that was passed by the council. And there were people that were gung ho about it and there were people that were against it. Uh, I that, as far as I'm concerned, the early returns seem to be positive, but there I still have some concerns. And I still want to wait and see, wait and see like the.
That's fair.
We could always, if if it's, if it's thriving and then it'll be even worth, it'll be worth even more for developers to come in. I feel like there's there's time for us to I I don't want to over-incentivize property assemblage and then find out that it didn't that there were issues and it wasn't working the way we envisioned. I feel like this was a great first step. I feel like we need to see how it works. This is just my opinion. Feel like we should see how it works.
We don't pay for it.
And then, yeah, and I and I don't get paid for my opinion, right? Um, but uh, I just, that's just a a kind of concern that I have. I feel like uh, the the more I think about it, the more I feel like we can hold off on on incentivizing uh, that kind of development until we we have a little better sense. I was hoping that by now we'd have a good sense of what what the downtown was gonna be like. Right? I I hoped that by now all fifty of those units would be filled with with residents and we'd have all kinds of, you know, we'd we'd have a much better sense. I I feel like we've been operating under that, right? Like, we wait, we held off on the parking study. Let's see until we've got more people in here, but I just feel like we might have to wait a little bit. And I feel like we can, we can add this on. You know, if 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 things go the way we hope, I feel like we could easily add the the song.
Yeah, I I guess I kind of looked at it the other way. If 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 things are going really well, then we don't need this. You know what I'm saying?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I mean, to me, we're kind of losing focus while we started talking about this district when we start now delaying what the ultimate goal is. Let the market tell you the ultimate answer. This is not gonna work. All this stuff that we're trying to do is not gonna work, but to stop it when the possibilities are there is ultimately, we want to change that area. You you don't want it the way it is. At least I don't want it the way it is now. If you do, then we're scratch all this because then we're wasting time. But if you do, but if you want to change there, then you do have to incentivize that with a little bit of of, you know, those small lots are difficult to and a lot of them are eyesore. So if you do want to make a difference, we're we're not making concessions on the biggest thing that everybody had a big problem with this whole project reason, which is parking. We've put stuff in place that is gonna, you know, uh, eliminate that concern. The biggest problem, that's the truth. That's what everybody had a beef about. We're not removing any of that stuff. We're just saying on other things that might, the floor ratio will probably allow you to maybe allow to have more parking. And little stuff that you might take that for granted, you know, but at the end of the day, I just think that we, the focus of the area is to improve it, to wait and see and come back. I don't, me personally, I like a lot of the changes that we talked about here today. And I'm glad that we brought up stuff and and uh, because, you know, little things you do forget or you don't see it. And even with Heidi, she saw a couple of things that she felt we could clarify and make better. But in reference to the overall idea of the area, to me, I I'm focused on changing it. And I think the steps we're taking.
And the thing is, and you have, I mean, there's so many ways to look at this, and I know we all do. We all try to really look at it in all these ways, but time has passed. I mean, this project has been going on way past any of us would have believed that it it's not here. But time has passed and nothing else has changed in that area and.
We even changed the use of it.
Right, and even and it's still, so do we want to keep it? And I agree with with Councilman's end. And I agree with, with Councilman Centine, that whole area of Canal Street in particular. Um, it has the potential to be a really cool place facing the ocean, you know, the ocean. Facing the water, um, you know, just walkability, which is what we want to create a downtown. And reality, nothing has happened since the town center. And, you know, we could say, well, we're waiting for that to fill in. Um, you know, something should have been along the lines and, and the other part, and I'm not discounting at all what you're saying, because I understand the value of waiting and let's see and not being caught like, you know, we put all this into place and while we went too fast. The other part too is a lot of those small lots, you know, realistically, um, think of the crackers. You know, and then it's another restaurant and it's another restaurant and it just can't make go of it, right? And if, even if they were to build a new building there, it's basically so limited by the size that, as much as we would like them to succeed, it's kind of, you know, the possibility is that it's going to be constantly uh, changing hands. So providing that kind of incentive, also one thing that I've heard, I don't know this for a fact, but I've heard that a lot of developers, um, a lot, you know, often don't want to go before the council and say, well, you change this. They're just looking at the broad picture. They're having somebody look at the possibility, you know, what's in place in that area? Can we come in and does it look like, you know, we can get this not, oh yeah, we'd have to go before the council. They're not going to waste their time. So although somebody could do that, the chances are we may be discouraging these, you know, people that are kind of, is that a possibility in that area? The, the thought of, of all the paperwork and the cost and the time to come before a council and try to get something through in our particular area. You know, in, in our city may not be where, you know, people are going to vote their attention or their efforts. So it's totally, I see where you're coming from, Councilman Fahad, but, um, you know, it's been a long time and really basically the area looks the same, the surrounding area on Canal Street. And, and the whole area of this gateway was to, um, now with this, the Southern Bell AT&T building, I share your concerns with that. Um, in fact, you know, I had asked, I go, we're adding that area. We haven't even talked to the owners. Turns out it's very difficult to find out even who is interested or who's responsible for that, but you know, I wanted to extend that. I can see that as being, look, um, maybe we don't want to extend that part of it, you know, and keep it where it is. But the, the small package kind of facilitating that, or at least putting out, um, feelers, letting developers know that there's feelers that look, you, yeah, you could, we're receptive to assembling some areas and making it a little more active. I, I don't know that that, um, is a bad thing.
My, my, my big concern is, yeah, I don't, I don't know to what extent, uh, that, but we have a, a big residential project there with fifty plus, I think it's fifty-one units, I think. Uh, talking about two to three people per unit, it's my understanding that, that it's not, uh, it's, it's not even halfway rented out.
Tammy, do you know about that? I know you're kind of.
Out of fifty-something, built or just leased? But I mean, that, that, you know, people move it in or it's just leased, you don't know, or commitments.
Yeah.
Cause that could vary. Alright.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it doesn't, it doesn't look to me, right? And, and you know, I, you, you try to go online and see, you know, because everybody's, uh, you know, everybody advertises online. Yeah. So you, you get a sense of the vacancy. Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to, uh, throw down on, on, on them. That, that building, that's a big variable. That's a lot of people when that thing is full. When, I'm not even saying if, when that thing is full, it's going to be a lot of people, okay? Those people may, may want to go to, you know, the, the, uh, I forget what the name of the, the new restaurant is at Crackers, right? I think, I think that, just my opinion, the prudent thing to do is to wait on just a couple. But I think that again, expanding the overlay, uh, that, that project, that, that city block is one giant project. That's, that's going to be one big project. And then, you know, once you, that, you know, under the overlay, then that may encourage a developer to come in, buy it up, uh, and, and then now you've got another big project. I, I'd like to get a couple reps in with the project that we got before we, I, I don't feel like we should be in a rush to, uh, double down on assembling properties and, and getting bigger. Again, like, like Heidi mentioned, like people could come in now and they could assemble the, those little uh, properties on Canal Street and, and build something like that. We can't keep them from doing it. But I would feel more comfortable waiting to see like when, when all those residents are there living there, like they're going to be our neighbors and they're not, they're not there yet. Uh, and I think that most people that I talk to would like to see how that's going to look and what it's going to mean for all the surrounding business. And then when, when all of those, I'm expecting just in, you know, the way, and I, believe me, I am a layperson when it comes to how long it takes for uh, all the infrastructure for restaurants and for all those permitting to go in. I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be like a year to a year and a half before all those bays. Right now, we've got about, there's fourteen bays and I think there's like three, three of them or two of them that are going to, three that are going to open the doors. So that means we got eleven bays and some of them are still kind of empty. When all of those gets filled up, when, when we have a sports bar that's taking up four bays that on a Saturday is going to have twenty employees, uh, and on a Saturday night and a bunch of people going in and when we have a bunch of restaurants and like, I, I think that that's when we're really going to be able to evaluate what all of these innovative things that we've, we've done, I just, I don't feel like we should be adding and doubling down on like more, more, more until we see what we got. That's just my opinion. It's, it's people, it's heads that we're counting. And they're just not there right now. And I worry about overextending ourselves. We could always, we could always extend this if we see that we, we can extend the overlay district, we can add more incentives, we could always add. It's just, once you give it, trying to take it away, and especially when you have a bunch of projects like that, I just feel like it could get away. It is, I hope not. I don't think it's what's going to happen, but you never know what's going to happen. But what if, what if, uh, you've got this big project for whatever reason fails and then you've got empty storefronts and you got things and now you got, I mean, I don't know. I just, I feel like the prudent thing to do is to do all this cleanup, fix this ordinance, help the, the, uh, project and site plan review process, strengthen the ordinance, help with parking, get all that together, uh, all these things that we talked about. But in terms of expanding and incentivizing, uh, more and more big development, I don't feel like we are at a point where we should be doing that. But again, it's just my opinion.
To the chair. So I'm not into the big development. I think we have as big as we're going to get, right? I think what we're looking for is like a, a, a small town charming feel where we can walk the block of Canal Street, maybe go to a coffee shop or a bookshop or a small restaurant. We want to see kind of stuff happening like that. I think we have enough residential areas around there. I think what we're trying to do is bring back what we kind of reversed, which we were optimistic, which we knew wasn't going to change, um, on Canal Street. So maybe we want to provide capital limitations on Canal Street, maybe start at a smaller scale, right? Instead of like this large scale, like even if you put it in there, that strip doesn't even have the capacity for a large scale land assembly, unless you're going to put a massive building, right? We're looking for more of a, kind of like a little shops, right? Something that will line up. And I don't think you need to have a shop more than, I mean.
Ten thousand square feet.
Well, a, a shop of ten thousand square feet, that's enormous.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we're here proposing large scales and.
No, 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 no. I mean, I don't think that anyone would ever think that this is large scale, you know?
Yeah, but you, if you have it in there.
No, no, even, even, even with this in there, this does not qualify as large scale. Um, but these properties, especially the ones on Canal, they're not the only ones. I mean, like we literally went one by one, looking at the, the sizes of these properties, right? They're very small. They're very small. And if each, and I, I know because, you know, at least two property owners have been coming to see me like every, every month or every couple of months. And they just can't pull the plug. One of them wants to build two houses on his lot. That's what you're going to get.
Yeah, that's not the highest and best use for them.
That's what you're going to get. Just.
So we're going to. Two things, um, it's ten fifty-one. You have an eleven P M. Perfume, thank you. So remember this, this is, uh, we, we can continue to have debate, uh, during first reading, hopefully very soon. And, and certainly at second reading, um, and, and certainly take your feedback, uh, between first and second. The other thing, uh, Councilman Fahad, you mentioned something about the numbers. And perhaps, you know, I, I think just food for thought. Maybe it's not filling with the retail tenants because the numbers aren't there in the sense that there's not enough around it to support, uh, retail tenants coming in. So when, when you're looking at your potential retail site, what else is around you? Makes a difference to, to who's going in there. So you're looking at who are your, who are your neighbors from a retail perspective? And so if the numbers aren't there to support it and, and to sort of provide for a collective growth, that may also affect why those, and I don't know if this is the case here, I'm just sort of surmising that those numbers may not make sense for people looking to come in.
I will tell you that we just.
I don't see that as our problem though. I mean, I, I was surprised the Berry's Cleaner property has.
It's too expensive. They marketed it wrong.
Well, but I mean, uh, they, they created six, they created six storefronts in there and they've got like before. I think there's only one left empty.
Cause it's more affordable.
Things are probably popping.
Yeah, it's a matter of.
It's my understanding that a lot of the bays.
Who is that? The Berry's Cleaner site? There's a few.
Yeah, one left. It's awful. It's great.
Right?
And they're smaller and which works. Yeah. And by the way, there is a.
Any, how many bays at the bottom of the town center don't have a permit already submitted? Like, alright.
We, we recently approved a restaurant, uh, like I think that, you know, there were two rounds of reviews and, and it's approved and, um, we have looked at maybe four or five, um, interior.
Two, the, and again, on that, on the, the residential side.
Right.
And then the retail side, there was only two bays left to my knowledge.
Right.
That are.
So you see, that's, that's my point. It's not that the retail isn't coming because there isn't a need for it. The retail is coming. It's going to take some time because those are just shelves, right? But that's going to take some time. The, the, what, what there isn't is all the patrons that are supposed to be living there, the tenants. I, I don't see them. They're not, that, that building isn't full of tenants. And that's going to, that's going to mean a lot. Again, like I said, but we could do, we could incentivize more down the line, one, once we get, have a better sense, I just.
To the chair.
But, yes, sir.
I just, to me, back to the same thing we talked about. That building is going to tell us the truth and the reality. The market participants are going to tell us that they want to even entertain any of these properties. But why am I going to waste all this time? Look at how long we take it to get to this point, to come bring up something that we want for that area? But to me, it's like, do it now. Wait for what? To next, then we're going to bring this up? How about if it takes another year and a half and then those people get discouraged? And don't come back because it is a problem. You got to come back through this whole, you know, show to get back to what they want to do. That's, if that's what we want for that area, now we don't want that area, then you've got to say it now.
What do we want for this area?
Well, you want walkability, but you want also people there that retail, restaurants.
Right, no more residential.
You need a combination of both. Well, you're already putting, you're putting restrictions on the parking. And now if somebody comes there and pays all this parking fees, we're going to have a problem with that too.
I think, I think, well, the discussion is what your vision is for Canal Street. That's a whole different discussion and, and I think it's, uh, one that you may, we may need to have sooner than later. However, the point of, of, and I understand, Councilman, what you're saying about waiting for, for the one town center to finish and, and because of the headcount. But you just heard that the property owners that currently own property on Canal Street, one of them is looking at putting two houses on there. Is that what you? Attached houses. It, it is, and, and there, there's some interest. But the, the, the whole point of this incentive is to get better projects in there. Instead of being stuck with two attached houses, um, that'll be there for the foreseeable future. So, so we have to look at it that way as well, because once somebody builds those two houses, they're there, you know?
So let me ask you this. Does somebody have a motion? We've got five minutes till eleven, where we're going to have to take a vote to extend it. What is it? Every fifteen minutes or half an hour? Is it fifteen minutes? Okay, um, which, why don't we do that now so that we at eleven, um, is there a motion to extend this to eleven fifteen? So we can continue. Okay, or is there a motion? Does somebody have a motion on this? Um, we've talked about, you know, some changes to it, some more dramatic ones, but perhaps you have a motion on it. Um, I don't know that we're going to get a consensus right now. I think we're.
Not even here.
Huh? So should we? I'm open to suggestions. I, I'm having trouble reading. I.
You guys can vote to recommend it as, as discussed and then we can defer the, the vote.
Hold on, we, we can, and I'm sorry, sir. We can defer this item, right? Without having to go back to first reading? Oh, this is, I'm sorry.
We're still at the LPA.
So what I would, I would get it out of LPA because you've had extensive discussion. So I would make a motion, you know.
I'll make a motion to defer this.
Not defer.
No.
No, make a motion to recommend approval with the conditions you've discussed. And then.
On first reading.
On, on LPA. And then bring back first reading. You don't need to vote at the next meeting, correct?
Okay, the conditions discussed are.
Next meeting, because I'm going to be out.
November nine.
Uh, I'm sorry, November twelfth.
So then it would be. The Tuesday after Veterans Day. By the way, that we don't meet on Veterans Day, we meet on Tuesday. Um, the conditions.
I'm unavailable, by the way, that meeting. Yeah, I remember now.
You are or not?
I, you said Tuesday, right?
Right.
I, I'm, I'm unavailable. Yeah.
So the conditions we've discussed, I brought up some conditions. You've brought up some conditions which are actually major ones, removing that Southern Bell building. I don't know that anyone has real feeling about that one way or the other, right? It's kind of, it's hard to know. Um, so you could pull that and pull the other one. If you wanted to make a motion, I don't know. I'm, I'm just wondering. I mean, we're going to have to do something here because we're getting to, or I need a motion to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen.
I'm going to make a motion to end the LPA. Could we do that? And, uh, what, how do you want me to word this? So we can go back to the other meeting to not move forward with the first reading? I don't, I don't.
So because, well, we have a couple of concerns. This had to be, unlike other ordinances, this had to be noticed for first reading because it, it changes your list of uses. So you've incurred that cost, so I would, I, I would prefer to have a motion and, and get some sort of, uh, decision.
Out of LPA.
Out of LPA and first reading. Um, remember we can massage things between first and second. We can certainly, um, we can have the first reading tonight as we had planned. And then we can have this as a discussion prior to second reading. There's nothing to stop us from doing that. If you want to wait for Victor's feedback, um, I'm just trying to avoid the expense of the advertising costs, which are significant for this type of ordinance.
And it's not something that I can put on the website either. It has to be through the Herald.
Correct.
Public, like published, so.
But that's for the, not just the LPA.
And second, yeah. Days before the second hearing.
And second reading.
So I would.
Have we already advertised the second reading?
Not yet. And just for timeframe purposes, so the next meeting is November twelfth. The December meeting, remember, we're only meeting one time in November, December's, uh, December ninth.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to approve this item with all the changes that we've talked about, except not extending to, to the, um.
The AT&T.
You would leave the boundary as is?
As is.
Okay, thank you.
The boundary as is, and what about the, um?
That is suggested to us.
Yes, but what about the, um, uh, land assemblage thing that Councilman Fahad? Thing that Councilman Fahad.
The incentive?
Yes, for land assemblage.
On the floor ratio, no. The, the land assembly, I. No, yeah, that you said, I believe you wanted to keep it the, the way.
Correct. He's saying, take everything that we'd said tonight, except what Vic, what. Councilman Fahad was saying about removing things.
Right.
He's saying.
Everything except removal system.
Right. Leave, leave the boundary as is.
Okay, that's the motion. So all we're, um, we're doing are the changes that I talked about that, you know, and leaving in the boundary and leaving in the assemblage. All right. Is there a second? Okay, the motion dies. We're at eleven.
So I, I'd like to make a motion, um, to accept. And remove the extension of the boundary and remove the land assembly portion for, for the discussion. So we could massage between first and second, because I think we need to see a little bit more of what. That area, uh, the vision that we want for that, because I, I really don't know. And I want to get ahead of, of the single family housing if they put two.
Let's, we're at eleven oh one. I don't want this later to be a problem. So let's first, I need a motion to extend it to eleven fifteen. Doesn't mean we have to stay to eleven fifteen, but we can't sit here and talk and not.
Motion to extend meetings to eleven fifteen.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? Call the vote.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I want to make sure whatever we vote later isn't, you know, that it's not legal. Okay, now go ahead and make, finish your motion.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the gateway. But amending the land assembly portion and the extension of the boundary. I'm not too.
That's what Councilman Fahad was saying.
Correct.
But you're, okay.
And with the changes that we discussed before. Of all, yes, okay.
Okay.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilman Santeen?
No.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries three to one.
Okay, um, now we can.
Adjourn.
Adjourn the LPA.
At eleven oh three.
And we are resuming the, uh, the city council meeting for October twenty-eighth.
Call the meet, call the regular council meeting back to order. Madam, third restrictive expediency, we have four out of our five members here. Victor Vazquez is absent.
Okay.
Have a quorum.
And we are doing, um, item, uh, eight A?
Eight A.
Item eight A.
Erica, help you out here. An ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, comprehensively amending section one fifty dash zero seven, zero point one, Miami Springs Gateway Overlay District within Article Seven Business District of Chapter one fifty zoning code. Of the city's code of ordinances, providing for conflicts, providing for survivability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date, mayor and council. This is an ordinance on first reading. You just had extensive discussion during your LPA hearing. On the ordinance where the, where you sitting in your capacity as the LPA, uh, voted to recommend. Approval of the ordinances with the changes that you discussed during the LPA hearing. Uh, and in addition, um, recommending that the boundary for the district remain as it currently is. In other words, not extending the boundary from Nakota to Market Street. And also removing the provisions relating to land assemblage and the F A R. As well as the additional incentives for land assemblage. Um, that motion passed on a three to one vote. Um, so at this point. It would be appropriate for one of you to make a motion to either to, to approve, uh, the same motion that you just approved during LPA. Um, and then we can bring this ordinance back for second reading. It sounds like it would come back in December. Sylvia and I will not be here for the November meeting. Um, so that will give us enough time to, to speak with you individually, um, and certainly bring. We're not going to make any changes between first and second reading that you haven't discussed up here. But for the second reading, we'll at least have a better idea or have had the opportunity to speak with you about the ordinance. And then in the December meeting. We can make any additional revisions that you collectively ask for, um, at that meeting. And the reason I'm saying December is, um, I want to be clear for notice purposes. That we are advertising and that we are all, uh, in sort of consensus as to. Having the second reading of this ordinance advertised for December. It can certainly be at some other point, but I just, I, I want to get that clear now.
Mayor, motion to, motion to approve, uh, the recommendation of the LPA, LPA that just passed on a three, one vote. As stated by the city attorney.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilman Santeen?
Nope.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries three to one.
All right, thank you. And real quickly, let's do it real quickly. Just in case there's something that has to be mentioned, our city attorney, is there anything?
Uh, you have an election, uh, next week. Um, your question is the last on the ballot. We had an information session with the clerk last week.
It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube. It's on social media, I'm sure.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, great. Um, our city manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, over the last couple of weeks, uh, we've had a lot of questions regarding the county airport, um, the county lands and the. Unsolicited proposal that was submitted to the county, um, to develop three project, three residential towers there. As, as we indicated at the last meeting, those plans have changed. Um, and I just got a text from Commissioner Cabrera's office a short while ago saying that. There's no new update. Everything's very fluid. There's no solid plans. The, the, those original plans that had the three towers, that's no longer on the table. It's not being discussed anymore. So it's down to one property perhaps, but it still has to go through FAA approval. Um, and there's still a lot of discussions. And he did indicate, um, that. This, the city of Miami Springs will have a seat at the table if this progresses, you know, further. So I did want to give that update to the, to the, to the council and to the residents watching.
Thank you, J C. Very important. Thank you. Tammy, do you have anything?
I guess I have a few things. Um, I just, uh, want to mention, uh, we have the call to artists for Art in City Hall. Um, open and we welcome any artists, new artists, and if, uh, you have any artists that want to participate. Um, please email, uh, jaser s at Miami Springs dash F L dot gov. Uh, November first, from six to ten, we have the hundredth centennial kickoff and fundraiser gala. Tickets are available still at the Curtis Mansion for sale. Um, November second, we have the first annual Glenn Curtis Vintage Motorcycle and Car Show. From ten A M. to four P M. at the circle. And, and then I'm just going to reiterate what Heidi had said, November fifth is the. Uh, election day, uh, make sure that, uh, everybody goes out and votes, um, and particularly for Miami Springs. Uh, charter amendment question.
Thank you, Tammy. Hey, the vice mayor's not here. We'll start with Councilman Fahad.
Nothing to report.
Okay, uh, Vice, uh, Councilwoman Bravo?
Um, just a happy Halloween and go vote. I already did.
Councilman Santeen?
Thank you. Nothing to report.
Hey, and for me on my part, I just want to thank Councilman Santeen for your work on, um, for this anniversary celebration. I'll be out of town that weekend, spending Halloween with our grandchildren out of town, but, um. I, I've heard from a lot of people are looking forward to it, the gala and then the, um, motorcycle show on Saturday. So thank you so much. I know you've done a ton of work behind the scenes to, to bring that to our city. And with that, um, happy Halloween to everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Meeting is adjourned.
The record breaking meeting. And you're saying, hey, thirty.